Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, February the 5th, 2018. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan.
Clark Trezger.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Tuesday, January the 16th, 2018. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none either. Motion, if no questions or comments or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Board, you have been given a docket of wastewater claims dated February the 5th, 2018, in the amount of $80,309.26. The floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none, thank you.
I don't have any.
If there's no questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated February the 5th, 2018, in the amount of $80,309.26.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. Under new business, we only have one item tonight, and that is the 2018 Sewage Works budget. And that really isn't an item for approval. It's just printed out for your information this evening. So if you have any questions, we'll entertain them. But if not, I want to thank the clerk and Brad for working on this document. And we're already into the new year, so it's business as usual. Any questions or comments?
I have none.
I have none.
We'll move on. We have no other new business. Comments from board members?
I have none.
I don't have anything.
No comments. I ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:03 PM. We will convene the Board of Public Works and Safety meeting in five minutes. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, February the 5th, 2018. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan.
Clark Trezger.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Tuesday, January the 16th, 2018. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
If there's no other questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, we have 66 pages of corporate claims in the amount of $1,882,351.32. The floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
There's several payrolls in here, like at least three. So there's a lot of work that's went into this document, and I appreciate it very much. If there's no questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated February the 5th, 2018, in the amount of $1,882,351.32.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. This evening, we have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. Under new business, we have several items tonight. The first is an agreement between Franciscan Alliance and the Beach Grove Fire Department to continue with the ambulance services chief.
I've attached agreement between St. Francis and the Beach Grove Fire Department. This is for the paramedic precept program and also for the EMT out at Station 57. Currently, St. Francis Paramedic Program, they provide a paramedic preceptor and an EMT driver at Station 56. We have EMT students and paramedic students that also come out and ride out on that vehicle. At Station 57, they provide an EMT driver. And we also partnered with St. Francis where their paramedic students participate in the Sage program where they can come out and work the medic truck at Station 57 while they're in class. It just overall encompasses that student's everyday job to education, and they just wrap it all together. It's a great program. So in the agreement, I sent it off to Craig so he could review it, take a look at it. Also, at the back of the appendix, there's an agreement for increase of pay, increased by 50 cents periodically each six months. That was included in the budget for 2018, but in the agreement, we were able to put it off for the first increase in July.
Board members, any questions or comments?
I have none.
I have none.
Is there anything changed in this agreement other than the cost?
There is one change. It's an agreement for St. Francis allow Beach Grove Fire Department to drug screen their employees since they're driving an apparatus. If they're involved in an accident, they will be subjected to a drug screen. And also for random drug screens when they come out and we have our own employees random, we can also pull the St. Francis employee for that day.
But they would pay for that?
We pay for that because it benefits us. It's a protection of our...
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Counsel, any comment?
No, I looked at it. I mean, it's virtually identical to an agreement we entered into the previous year with the one exception that Rob talked about.
And I was looking at it. It automatically, I think it automatically renews this time if we don't make any changes?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. All right. If there's no further questions or comments, I'll ask, you wish to continue this, don't you?
Absolutely, this time, we definitely do. And there is a clause, if we ever decide not to continue the program, we have the option to make notification to them to end it.
All right, thank you. Having said that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the renewal of the agreement between Franciscan Alliance and the Beach Grove Fire Department.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. I don't see anywhere where we sign, Rob.
There should be a signature page, second to last. And on that page, it's...
Oh, it's just the date.
The president and yourself as the governing board.
That's all I see is...
Sign right there. Sign on the side, right there.
Once Dr. Callahan has signed this, Rob, can we get a copy for our records, please?
I'll get a copy. I'll submit it to Dan for his records.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board. Step increase for firefighter Joe Anglin. Chief?
Dear Board, I come before you today to ask for approval of the pay increase of Joe Anglin to the position of second-year firefighter. If approved, Joe's pay will increase to $2,320.57 per paid period. This will take effect payroll starting February 10th, 2018. The position pays in our 2018 budget.
Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
Budgeted for this?
Yes.
Okay. No questions or comments, ask for a motion to approve the chief's request for Joe Anglin.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Now, Joe, there were several of your fellow employees back there nodding their head, "No."
They love me.
You got anything to say? You want to say anything?
I love those guys.
I'm still a first-year guy, so I love them.
All right. All right. Chief, thank you. Next order of business is college pay adj... Oh, excuse me. Permission to hire full-time PAO. Chief?
Dear Mayor and Board, I'm requesting to hire Ruth Ann Burr as a full-time PAO. She will work evenings from 4:00 PM to midnight, Monday through Friday. She will also be the Assistant IDEX Coordinator and Property Room Assistant to Beth. Her salary will be $35,000 per year. There is money in the budget. Her start date, if approved, will be February 12th of 2018.
Thank you, Chief. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
Is this in the salary ordinance?
Yes, this is actually taking Starla Marisa's salary position. So Beth took her position, and Beth had her own salary, and this left Starla's salary position open until we could get Ruth hired.
Okay. I'm not questioning the dollar amount. What I'm questioning is, is it actually listed in there as full-time under PAO?
Yeah, I don't know if it's listed as full-time.
I mean, if it's not, we need to change the salary ordinance to read that.
You just have to follow up on it to make sure it's there. If it's not, we'll have to have the counsel address it.
Okay.
Not tonight, but...
Because she was listed as a part-time PAO until this is approved, so I'm sure that, I would imagine it's not because she was never approved to be a full-time PAO along with Beth.
But it's got to be spelled out specifically, and that's, you know, even though she was in there as part-time, then there's got to be a line item for full-time PAO because I don't think we've had that previously.
Yeah, Beth was the full-time PAO that worked four to midnight. So Beth took Starla's position as, so actually, there is a full-time PAO which was...
Well, then, we might be right on it. If you would just check on it, just to make sure that we're...
So the names are just changing, and Beth is doing Starla's position as secretary, and Ruth will be doing Beth's position as a full-time PAO.
Well, I would think we would be all right in it.
Just a name change.
Yeah. All right. Having said that, motion to approve the chief's request to hire Ruth Ann Burr.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Chief, we have college pay adjustment for the police department.
This is for one of our officers that hadn't received it for 10, for two years, and I wasn't aware. I don't look at their paychecks, and it's for Tim White. He has an associate's degree through Ivy Tech. We're asking that that pay be adjusted because he came up and said he wasn't getting pay and showed us his diploma, the way he had graduated for that two-year degree.
So your request tonight is to see if we should, the board will reimburse, are paying his back pay?
Paying for the two years that he should have been paid for that college degree once he got out of his probationary period.
The clerk and I talked about this the other day, and we just, I think we came to the conclusion, we'll just let the board decide on how to proceed with it. Any questions or comments from board members?
So he did show you his...
He had it, but I don't know if it was never turned, that we asked for it, or it got lost. I don't know. I just know that he questioned not getting that pay, and we looked into it and saw that he was not.
What, I just received this approximately two weeks ago, and it's always been the employees' responsibility to get that to us either when they're hired, after they're hired. But in the past, we have never went back and gave back pay for this because it's a benefit we offer them, and it's their responsibility. I mean, there's no way anyone in my office would know that he's got a degree, and I'll just leave it at that, so...
Here's my take on it, and Davey might see differently. This is something that we do to reimburse our employees if they have a college degree. He has one. Whether he forgot to turn it in, you forgot to turn it in, or someone didn't track it, to me, that's just a clerical error. And if we're paying and this is what we do, then I personally feel like we need to pay him.
It's paid to everybody else.
What year did it, what year are you talking about?
I gave the certificate to Dan. I don't remember what yours...
I think it was '16, '17, and that was not paid, and then '18, which we're just a month into it. But...
I mean, it could be a thing that maybe he wasn't fully aware, that maybe he thought it was, we only pay for a bachelor's degree, not associate's degree. I mean, there's all kinds of factors. But the fact is, he has a degree. He didn't get paid. I think we should pay it. That's my take.
My take would be, if we don't have it in writing that specifically says it's up to the employer, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's in policy that they get paid for it.
Yeah. And if the city doesn't have it in writing, to me, we should pay it. But it might be something you want to address. I'm not saying that. It might be some, I don't know if that would come under the handbook, employee handbook, or what, but...
It's educational incentive pay, and we do have an ordinance on it.
Yeah.
But I just want to make sure that it's specific, that it was not a clerical end on my office because we've never received it. I received it two weeks ago.
Right. I wasn't saying that, Dan, it was anybody from your office.
No, I...
I am just saying that it could have been an oversight on the employee, on whoever. But we do offer the educational reimbursement amount, and I personally think we should pay it.
Any other questions or comments? I'll ask for a motion from the board on how you want to proceed.
I'll make a motion that we pay the employee, Tim White, for his educational reimbursement for his associate's degree.
I'd second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Chief, we have another thing that we have to do tonight with the special response team pay. There's two people that will no longer receive it because they're not on the team.
Yes.
Okay. I was reading the agreement, and if that's the case, the board has to approve that. Is that right, Nathan?
The special response pay? I can't remember how we did it the last time. We got added in the last contract, and then everybody just got it, but I can't remember if we had to go for it.
But it says something to the fact that if they no longer are eligible to receive this, something, the board has to approve it.
Is that then...
Yeah. So those two officers would no longer receive the SRT pay. So I'll ask for a motion to remove the $250 annually for SRT pay for Officers Egan and McGuire.
Can I ask, could you mind explaining that a little bit more? Sorry.
This is a special, it's a special response team, like a SWAT team.
Okay.
But...
And they're just not doing that work anymore?
They're not. They have resigned from the team.
Okay.
Davey, have any...
No.
Motion to remove the annual pay for SRT for Egan and McGuire.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye and the motion carries. Now, Chief, the last thing I want to talk about tonight is the FTO pay. When the salary ordinance was put together for '18, I did not include FTO pay in the salary ordinance. So I've asked our legal counsel to give me some guidance on this, on how we should proceed. If I need to put this, we're going to pay it, but if I need to get this in the salary ordinance, then we'll, I'll draw up an amendment to the salary ordinance to put it in, so...
So is it category one? Is that where it's coming out of?
I believe so.
Yes, it's a pay, so it has to be category one.
I agree with Mark on that. It's a pay.
What did we do last year?
This wasn't, it wasn't paid last year. This is a new item for 2018.
Oh, I thought it was.
Is that, is it a new item?
I believe it's a new item. Okay.
FTO instructor.
Is it a new item?
That was added for 2018.
Oh, okay. Right. But I did not get it, I did not put it in the salary ordinance for 2018, although it is in the agreement between the city and the FOP. So we're going to pay it. I just don't know the proper procedure to pay it. If we need to amend the salary ordinance to do it or what, that's what I'm asking.
I think we have to.
Okay. Then what we'll do is we'll amend the salary ordinance, not tonight, but another day, and get this in there. And that's an oversight on my part, and I apologize for that.
I think with it being a small amount, we'll be flexible to kind of do whatever it takes to make it work, since it was Dan's screw-up on this one, I think.
No, I agree. Yeah, left that out. No, I agree. I think it's such a small amount, it's not going to make any difference. You guys should have extra money in your payroll, and I don't think it's going to upset anything.
And we had talked about maybe paying it in June or July, same as we do the clothing allowance.
Would that be a one-time?
That'd be a one-time pay.
I see. That would work good.
But it's still got to be in the salary ordinance.
Right.
Because it comes out of category one.
Like I said, I think we could probably, whatever you guys come up with that works with the city, I think we could probably make work.
All right. Anything else, Chief?
I think that's it.
All right, thank you. Change order number eight, Churchman Avenue Sidewalk Project. Brad, did you want to give any input on this?
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Board. So this should be the last change order that you see on the Churchman Sidewalk Project. This one is probably the most complicated. It had to do with the downtime that was caused by a utility conflict with AT&amp;T. They had some fiber out there that was not initially marked on the utility locates. It came into play once construction started, and this halted the project for 50 days, 58 days or something. I think it might be spelled out on that change order. But for basically about two months, they couldn't do anything. So this money is damages recovered from the contractor. Initially, from NDOT, it looked like they were going to classify it as an error and omission, which kind of goes back on the designer. But after some thorough investigation, just to make a note of this, they did find out that United had done their due diligence in kind of tracking down all the locates, so they changed that to a changed condition in the field per this utility being in the way. So it resulted in a cost of, I think it's a little over $3,000.
So this is something that we would pay?
Correct.
Okay. And there should be some correspondence. Maybe it's not, I didn't include it in this, but I would ask the board to approve this, but I don't want to pay it until everything is finalized. And maybe at the end of the day, AT&amp;T will excuse it, and we won't have to pay anything. But I would ask the board to approve this, but I don't want to make a payment on this until everything is completely done and we have a chance to sit down and talk about this with the utility.
Correct. We do have the option of going to AT&amp;T and seeking reimbursement for this amount, which we've already reached out to them. It just so happens that the gentleman that we need to speak with is off for a medical reason, and I'm not sure when he's due back, but there has been an attempt to make some communication with the right people. So we'll see how, I don't know how quick that'll go. I've never been through this before, trying to get reimbursement from a utility, but it's certainly possible, and we've started that channel of communication already, so we'll see how it goes.
All right. Hey, Brad?
Yeah.
Will this hold up any reimbursement that we might have coming from NDOT because of this not being fully paid?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve change order number eight concerning the Churchman Avenue Sidewalk Project.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. This evening, Board, we have four handicap parking permit renewals, and we'll just do this all as one, and I'll defer to the clerk to read the application names. The four applicants, first one is Dean Avery, Susan Pitchell, Mark Arthur, and Jackie Ray slash Evelyn Pack. Any questions, comments from board members?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve all of the parking permit applications listed tonight by the clerk.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. This evening, next item is EnviroSweep contract renewal. Brad?
Dear Board, it is my recommendation to the Board of Works that the city continue the contract with EnviroSweep for the 2018 calendar year. There are no changes to any pricing or scope of work from the 2017 contract that was approved by the Board of Works on February 21st, 2017. EnviroSweep has been a reliable provider of street sweeping services in Beach Grove for the past three years. We do have money in the stormwater fund for this agreement. Please let me know if you have any questions or concerns.
Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none.
When the director sent this over to me, I asked Craig if he would research this and ask if we can do this without opening up two quotes.
Right, so the terms are identical, correct?
Correct.
I mean, I think we can do a continuation on this.
All right. Any questions or comments from board members?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the request from the Public Works Director to continue with EnviroSweep for 2018.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Next up is concrete floor refinishing at Building A, DPW. Brad?
Dear Board, I'm recommending that the Board of Works approve a quote to refinish the concrete floor in Building A at the Department of Public Works. Due to the amount of water around the slab of the... Due to the amount of water around the slab of this building, we are unable to keep the current linoleum tiles glued down. Refinishing the concrete floor of this building will provide a more maintenance-free, long-term solution. I have received quotes from R&amp;D Resurfacing for $19,266.60 and Indy Decorative Concrete for $20,250, and have found the quote from R&amp;D to be the most responsive. I do have money in the sewage works budget to fund this work. Please let me know if you have any questions or concerns, and this is due to the fact that we have about an 18-inch square linoleum tile currently, and with the amount of moisture in the slab that we have on this building, we can't keep them glued down. We've re-glued them, they come up, people trip on them, that's really not a great situation, so this, we thought would be a long-term, better solution.
Floor is open for any questions or comments.
Due to this safety issue alone, we need to get this done, so I'll make said motion, or make a motion that we go with Brad's quote from R&amp;D.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye and the motion carries, and I wanted to clarify, when Brad first brought it to my attention, the first question I had is, can you afford to do this? You know, and then he said there was extra, Dan put extra money in the sewage works budget to make an improvement out there, so... If you go out to the DPW building, you'll understand really quickly what Brad's talking about, and plus you have constant salt and grime exposure on the floor, it's just, it's just not conducive for that type of tile, so this is going to be a nice improvement. So we voted on it, didn't we?
Yeah.
Next up, landscape quotes. Brad?
Thank you. Dear Board, it is my recommendation to the Board of Works that the city award the 2018 landscaping bid to Borgman Enterprises. City has had a long-term positive relationship with Borgman Enterprises, and they have come in with the lowest cost for all areas quoted. I have enclosed a chart which shows each individual quote from Borgman Enterprises, Restoration Landscape, and ProCut Landscaping Companies. These areas have been quoted, these areas that have been quoted are the Roundabout, Centennial Park, Emerson Avenue, and Main Street. We do have money in the LRNS budget to fund this work. Please let me know if you have any questions, and this is, I don't know, maybe the third or fourth year we've done this in a row, and we bid out each location, and then I try to put them together to give a big picture of exactly what the costs are, and Borgman came in cheapest on each area for a total of $22,735 for those four areas throughout the city that he would maintain throughout the 2018 calendar year.
And I think the RDC meets this Thursday, I'm going to ask them to continue with paying for half of it. That seemed to have worked out, so... Floor is open for any questions or comments?
I have none.
I don't have any.
There's no questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the recommendation from the Public Works Director for Borgman Enterprises concerning the Roundabout, Centennial Park, Emerson Avenue, and Main Street maintenance for 2018.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last item of new business on the agenda is two licensing agreements for a massage license and a motel license, and Chief, did you...
I looked at both of them and approved them. One only had a signature, yet I didn't see a place for a signature.
Yeah, the Motel 6 one didn't have a signature spot, but you feel comfortable with both of these?
Yes.
One of the Board members had a question on the massage therapy, 27 years. There's no way, I mean, they might have been in business 27 years, but not on where they're at now.
I don't know about that. They've been there for a long time.
They were chiropractic, we moved in that, we moved in right next door to them in 1990, so they've been there since 1990.
I think that...
But as a chiropractor, and then he changed it to like a massage therapy.
Okay.
He's been there a while.
His business has been there that long.
Okay.
I'm beat you, Brad, okay.
Floor is open for any questions or comments?
I do have a question. Dan, have, do we need their policy number, their insurance policy number?
I think it would be, well, I don't know. Craig, would they have to have that? Because they're not actually doing anything that we would need to be additionally insured on, would we?
No, I don't think so.
What would the, what's the insurance? Oh, it's his liability carrier. I write through Foremost, and I didn't know they wrote this type of business. Did you see the insurance?
Oh, I just looked at the application.
I mean, that would be a commercial-type policy. I don't think Foremost writes that. It just kind of surprised me they got Foremost on there.
So is that an issue?
Well, it could be to one of our citizens if they actually went there and there was a claim against them, and they really do not have insurance.
Because we licensed it? Well, how would the city be on the hook?
No, the city wouldn't be on the hook, but one of our citizens could be...
What they're saying, they carry liability insurance, and somebody comes in trips involved, they got, but Foremost, unless they're doing it through, I don't know.
They would not, there would be no reason for them to add us as additional insurance.
No.
Okay.
They would just take care of their own liability and...
Okay.
All right, having said that, motion to approve the application for Motel 6 and Beach Grove Chiropractic for 2018.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. That is the, everything listed on the agenda, we do have another item concerning the Fire Department, and unfortunately, this afternoon, we had an employee who resigned, so Chief, can you take us through the resignation and what you would like to recommend to the Board?
Absolutely, thank you. Have a formal resignation, and I know there's only three copies, so I'll give you additional. This morning before noon, we had the resignation email came in from Courtney Henderson, and Courtney is one of our civilian paramedics. She's been here over five years, and we greatly appreciate the good work that she's done for us. She has decided to take a civilian paramedic job on the west side that's closer to her home, in the area where she first started in EMS. I would like to request to read her resignation into the record. With that, I do understand that I will have to have a resignation with her signature on it, and I will have a letter and submit that to Dan and this Board also. Her resignation letter states, Dear Chiefs and Lieutenant, please accept this as my formal notice of resignation from the Beach Grove Fire Department as a civilian paramedic. My last day will be February 16, 2018. I appreciate the support I've received from the men and women of the Beach Grove Fire Department. I have gained so much education and knowledge that will carry me beyond I could ever imagine in my future endeavors. The current leadership and crew members set standards well above the norm. Those expectations have helped me to develop into the paramedic I am today. I am grateful for the opportunities that have been given to me. It has been an honor and a gift to have been able to serve the great citizens of Beach Grove. Thank you, Courtney Henderson. Had the opportunity to follow up with Courtney also, make sure this was a course of action she wanted to take, and she did agree.
Let's go ahead and, I'll ask for a motion to accept her applicant, or her resignation.
Said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries, and just have to make sure that her signature letter is on file in the clerk's office. And how do you want to proceed, Rob?
What I would like to ask permission for this Board is if we would go ahead and hire Michelle Saunders as a firefighter with the Beach Grove Fire Department, what we would be able to do is go ahead and send Michelle to the IFD recruit class starting February 12. By doing so, Michelle's already been through our application process, she's already been through the per physical, and she is ready to go. What this would do, it would still leave a vacancy on our civilian side, but it would help us shore up the fireside, allow us to send Michelle to recruit class, so we'll have her back out on the street come August of this year. With our civilian paramedic, what I'd like to do is backfill with St. Francis Hospital Paramedic. And how we're going to fund this, use some Medicare money, like to work with Dan and the Mayor and discuss some options we have within our own budget to fill the gap, and provide those fill-ins for the civilian paramedic. Come August, it'd give us plenty of time to decide the course of action to replace a civilian paramedic, and this will help us in the long run, because right now, if we had to go ahead and do application process, advertise, send out applications, have those returned, do the interviews, the testing, the physical agility, we're still looking four to five months down the road before we would even have someone in this position. By hiring Michelle, we'd be able to get her on, again, get her to recruit class, get her back out on the street a lot sooner, and greatly benefit Beach Grove Fire Department.
Before I open it up for Board comments, the Chief came in late in the morning with the operations chief and talked to me about it, and we, when I was chief, I did the same thing, when we lose a civilian paramedic or want to move somebody over, so this isn't anything new, but what I wanted, what I, my thought to him was, I don't mind doing this, but don't come back to me a month later wanting to hire a civilian. And then obviously, the whole thing prefaces, can you afford to do this? I don't mind voting, I would recommend it, I don't mind voting yes, but you have to have the ability to fund this position.
With Courtney, she's already a third-year paramedic. Her base salary is roughly around $56,000. Michelle coming on for the rest of the year is roughly $46,000, so there is a difference there. Granted, Courtney was paid up through the 16th, and she does have eight vacation days that we'll have to pay out, but I believe we will be just fine funding this position, and again, come, and I've had the opportunity to briefly talk to Brent Henday, our union president, and just give him a heads up on this, but that position, the civilian position would not be replaced till later on in the year, after we discuss and be able to make sure we could financially afford that also.
And you're, that's the backfill that you're getting from St. Francis?
Yes, that's that civilian paramedic position that we still have open. We address that again with this Board later on this year.
Dave, any thoughts?
No, as long as the money's there.
Is Michelle a paramedic by any chance?
Yes, Michelle is a paramedic. Our, one of the thoughts was to ask her if she'd be interested to take this position till we had a fire position open, but she would take a significant loss of pay from where she's currently working, this is filling me up, civilian paramedic to Beach Grove, working as a civilian paramedic. So that's, that's why we'd like to go ahead and help shore up the fireside on her.
Any other thoughts? I'm open for a motion on how you want to proceed.
I'll make, I'll make motion to hire Michelle Saunders and accept the resignation of Courtney.
Where are you voting on Courtney?
Okay.
So just Michelle?
Yep, just Michelle.
Yeah.
And, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Dave.
I was going to second.
There's been a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries.
I'd like to read a letter to have her introduce to the Board if that's appropriate. Dear Board, I come before you today to ask for approval to hire Michelle Saunders. Michelle will be a new firefighter, they'll be, provide even staff across all three shifts. Michelle is certified EMT paramedic and has completed all prerequisites for hiring. Michelle will attend the February Indianapolis Fire Department recruit class. If approved, Michelle's pay will be $2,128.11 per pay period and start February 11, 2018.
All right.
Thanks, Rob.
That concludes new business. Any comments from Board members?
About licensing permits.
Thank you.
I have none, thank you.
We did them.
We did both of them under one.
Yeah.
The Motel 6 and the chiropractic. Oh, that one with the other, then? Okay, got you. It's out of order.
Dave, any comments?
I have no comments, no, sir.
Sandy?
I have none, thank you.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:50 PM. We will convene the City Council meeting in 10 minutes. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove, and at this time, we will convene our City Council meeting for Monday, February 5, 2018. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy Temple, Councilman-at-Large.
Dave Harrison, Councilman District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Vito Mascari, Council, District 2.
Elizabeth Lamping, Council, District 1.
Chris Duffer, District 3.
Kevin Day, District 4.
Thank you. Jim Brooks has an excused absence this evening. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council. I'm going to adjust the order of business and call our high school principal up from Beach Grove High School to do a committee report. Liz?
Good evening. Bishop and Deja send their regrets. They were otherwise occupied this evening, but they'll hopefully join us again next month. Just a few quick announcements, they wanted me to be sure and share inside our walls. The robotics team is actually making a comeback. They've had their best showing in the past three years, and they advanced to second round in a recent VEX competition. We are either through or headed into sectionals. If you were able to join us, it was an absolute heartbreaker at Manuel on Saturday for the girls, but we're looking forward to sending our wrestlers on. We were ICC champs in swimming and diving again, and we'll look forward certainly to boys' basketball. If you'd like to join us on Saturday, February 10, it's our Champions Together Inclusions event, and that's also senior night, though the varsity game will start at 2:30. So you'll see the inclusion event and then varsity on the 10th. And then a few dates as well, February 15 through the 17, that's a Thursday through Saturday. Our students are putting on The Diary of Anne Frank, and every showing will be at 7:00 PM, Thursday through Saturday. Really excited, I had a meeting about a week and a half ago, Mr. Gearhart and myself met with Diana Hendricks. She's doing the Coalition Grant that I'm sure many of you are aware of. We will hope to put in a Prevention Matters Grant in conjunction with that, so we're very excited about those efforts with our students. A few big things that I just wanted to spend a few seconds on, we, as I'm sure you guys have seen in the, in the news, we're looking at some big changes in education in Indiana coming, and we've got the graduation pathways that we're beginning to navigate. That's as of current 7th graders, the new graduation requirements, and then the accountability rules will be different for this school year, so the letter grades for schools coming out next school year. As it stands right now, we will receive a federal grade that may or may not differ from the state grade, which will be different from years past, and that will be certainly based on the legislative session that'll be through in March, and then the State Board of Ed will have some voting and rulemaking to do. So we're looking to navigate those, but the big thing that I think will impact the community is as we look at the grad pathways and the requirements that students have to do now, we hope to transition our community service to provide opportunities for our students as well in the business arena. So in addition to students continuing to go out in the community and provide a lot of the community service efforts, we'll hope to disperse a few of them to potentially expose... students to business ventures that they might not have ready access to. So we'll look for our teachers to identify people that they would have families or colleagues in different business arenas, and we might allow our students to go expose themselves to that during community service days. And that, like I said, is in part because of the grad pathway requirements, and will certainly in no way take from our community service work in and around Beach Grove. That's all I have this evening, unless anyone has any questions?
Congratulations to our basketball team.
Yes.
It was a big win.
Yep, yep. They're doing very well.
Liz, could you talk about Team Court for a second?
Oh, absolutely. So we are still implementing our first year of Team Court, and, you know, sponsorship by community in conjunction with the mayor. Reach for Youth has come in. We have held two courts, and certainly thanks to our judges, who were present this evening as well. And we have conversation with students, our students are the jurors, and so they have really good support, conversation with, with students who attend Team Court. And we'll actually be hosting an attorney training sometime in early February, probably in the next two weeks, for Team Court to train our students to also be attorneys as part of that. So that program is getting up and running. I haven't asked the judges yet, but we will hope to do that once a month next year, so we may have to increase our judge pool based on their schedule. Yeah, it's going very well. Anything else?
Did Ethan Smiley advance?
Yes, last I heard, he is, yes. I think that we had five come out, four come out. Thank you, you guys have a great evening.
Thank you, Liz. All right, back under special presentations, and thank you, Council. Tonight, I'll introduce the Honorable Judge Andrew Wells for the annual report for our city court. Judge Wells?
Thank you, sir. Good evening. I feel like I was just here. You all should have a PowerPoint presentation I put together, which is our, represents kind of the highlights for the year 2017 in the Beach Grove City Court. Excuse me, I'll turn to the second page. You'll see we had forty, just over 4,600 filings this year. It's a little bit lower than we had the last few years, but it's still, as you, as you can see, that we're kind of in a band here on filings of, you know, north of 4,500, south of 5,500, in that ballpark. I think it's going to stay around that, and ebb and flow, just depending on what cities and towns that use our court are targeting. You know, one, one reason we've seen a decrease is the city, or excuse me, the town of Speedway has had an uptick in their focus on compliance issues as opposed to traffic issues. They still issue quite a few traffic tickets, but I would say it's definitely, the moving violations have scaled back a little bit, and there've been an increase in compliance. But with compliance, the, you know, the amount of man-hours, compliance officer hours, police officer hours involved in one filing of those is, is much greater than a moving violation, right? So I wouldn't say that activity has decreased just number of filings in accordance with what they're prioritizing right now. So that, that usually is what is happening when you see numbers ebb and flow. Another one was during the unfortunate passing of Lieutenant Allen from the City of Southport, there was a downtick from the City of Southport making filings for about a month, two months, and, and they were, you know, as expected, busy doing other things at that time. So, you know, our numbers are much greater, as you can see, than they were six, seven years ago, but even small, you know, events like that, that, or refocusing like in the Speedway case, that a couple hundred will bump it up or down accordingly. So if you turn to the next page, this is the highlights of our, the court's dispersments for 2017. As you can see, the total to all municipalities and governmental entities was north of $800,000. Last year, it was around $880,000, so, still right in the, in the same neighborhood. Deferrals, I like to point out deferrals because it, it's a number that cities and towns care about because they get a larger portion of the fees associated with deferrals. So you can see Beach Grove, a little bit north of last year, Speedway and, Speedway down considerably, but again, that falls in line with kind of what their emphasis is. Other highlights, you know, there's the, the number that is net to Beach Grove, so when you process all the filings and you get all the court costs and fines sent off to the appropriate entities, whether it be the state, the county, or another city or town, that's what is, is left in the general fund of the City of Beach Grove. So that's just a bit shy of, of last year's number, but well above where it was, say, six, seven years ago. And then there you can see 2017, the top number was what this council budgeted for the court, and then 2017, what we actually spent, you know, about 30 grand less than what was budgeted. So a big chunk of that difference is staff. You guys have actually done us a pretty good favor, I think, and you've staffed, or you've budgeted the court the ability to, if filings increase substantially, we have the ability to, you know, tap into that extra dollars and, and have our part-time person work substantially more hours if needed. We've not needed to do that, and we don't. I mean, she, right now, is only working two days a week, which is perfect, but, you know, in, in the event, you know, right now, with the, the cities and towns that are using our court, they could easily uptick the filings a few thousand a year just by changing priorities or changing emphasis. If the prosecutors, Marion County Prosecutor's Office decided to allow state police to file here, or, or change some priorities, or even if there was a change in prosecutor, or change with some of the court, when I say court, the county court structures, you know, we could easily see an increase because we have jurisdiction for a lot of cases we don't hear right now. We could easily see an increase to that, but because of how you budget us every year, we can easily take on that load without any problem. But, so you can see what the difference there was on actual budget and actual expense. So if you turn to the next page, that just gives you a breakdown of the last seven years for total dispersments. As you can see, we're, you know, leaps and bounds ahead of where it was, say, six, seven, five, six, seven years ago. And I, as long as filings stay kind of in that band that they've been the last four or five years, which I expect them to do, will stay in this ballpark, you know, ebb and flowing. If you turn to the next slide, that's the breakdown of the, the net to the Beach Grove General Fund, so as you can see, similar story as the other slides. It's saying, it's kind of staying in that same ballpark, and it'll, it'll continue to do that. Now, the big thing for 2018 is the next slide. We are beginning the process, or I shouldn't say, we've almost completed the process of turning the Beach Grove City Court completely paperless and moving entirely to e-filing. So this all began in 2012, when I took the bench, I moved our court systems from an old case management system that we had to this Indiana Supreme Court's Odyssey system. The Odyssey system is free of charge to city and courts, to all courts actually, in the state. And the old system, we were paying money to, the, you know, I kind of had the sense that this would be the push from the Supreme Court, was move everybody to Odyssey, and they had kind of been making those overtures about the time I took over. So we made that move in early 2012, and, and that really streamlined our operations, it made them more efficient, and it made us go from, as you can see in the numbers, from a court that was handling, you know, 2,000 cases a year to now handling over 5,000 cases a year. It made that transition really seamless. Well, the next step from Odyssey is, is the Supreme Court has now started the process of moving courts to e-filing and paperless dockets, and we started that implementation in November of 2017. We fully implemented e-filing on February 2nd, excuse me, this is incorrect, February 1st. It was Thursday. I put February 2nd on your handout. So February 1st, we fully implemented e-filing, so attorneys and parties, you don't have to be an attorney, can start filing motions, pleadings, anything they want electronically. We are only the third city or town court in Indiana to do that. Plain, Carmel was the pilot, so the Carmel City Court went in, I think, October, and then Plainfield Town Court implemented e-filing in December, and then we were the third this month. So I'd kind of like to toot Beach Grove's horn when we get to be, you know, first in something, or towards the front in something. And also, I think it's interesting that we actually are ahead of all this, all but one, of the Marion County Small Claims Courts. They had a pilot a couple months ago in, I think it was Warren Township, but we will, we will be ahead of all them as well. We will have full implementation in April 2018. So what that, what full implementation means is attorneys, it'll be mandatory to use the e-filing system. So if they file paper, we'll reject, reject the filing, and they'll have to go back and file paper. If, if a non-represented litigant, or someone who appears pro se, so just, you know, a person without an attorney, if they file something by paper, we will scan that in, and we will handle that for them. We won't let someone like that, you know, be, you know, out, out to dry on an issue. But what we've been told is that a lot of county courts have this system already, is that some of the counties are seeing now, after a year or so of being on the e-filing system, that about eighty-five, 80 to 85% of all parties are using the electronic system. It's pretty easy. You'll see our, our website isn't fully updated yet, plan to do that in the next week or so. We'll have our old submit a motion page, we'll take that down and we'll implement, or we'll put a new page up that takes folks to the, the state's e-filing page, and it, it walks you through what to do. So if you were someone who didn't have an attorney, you could figure it out if you want to. But some folks just won't know that that's an option, and they'll still file the paper way. We'll have those channels open to those people, because we have too many folks that are unrepresented by, unrepresented that use our court, so, you know, we're not going to, I'm not going to allow this to make it difficult on them, if anything, it's going to make it a lot easier. This is going to simply increase efficiency in case processing, things will just move a little bit quicker. Paper filings, you know, just aren't as quick as something being submitted electronically. It'll eventually reduce our storage needs, so going forward, we won't be creating any more paper files that we have in the past. Now currently, you can go and look at, you know, we have, at those numbers that I showed you a minute ago, we have eight, well, 10 years of paper filing currently, of old files before we went this system. So we still have a lot of storage needs. We will slowly, as we have time, and as the budget allows, I, I'm not going to increase, you know, the staff's hourly rate, and this isn't an urgent thing, but we'll slowly try to clip through this, but we will get those ca, old cases uploaded into the electronic system so that they're there, even though they're closed and old, and, you know, we will eventually, it'll probably take a few years, but we will eventually get all the old cases and all those eight years of history on the e-filing system as well.
How long do you have to keep those files?
It, it depends on what case, the retention, retention schedules are different. Some of them, we have to keep in perpetuity because they're still an open case. You know, an individual that had a speeding ticket and their license is suspended, and, and they've never paid the ticket, and, you know, we have to keep that open until something happens. Either the individual pays it and rectifies the case, or, or motions for a new hearing, or passes away. I mean, those are kind of what takes place in those, and we have a lot of those cases. You know, after 10 years, you kind of build up a handful of those. Some were allowed to close after a couple years, and we do that anyway. And then others are 10 years. So the plan now is simply to, you know, we're just going to put everything on the electronic system, and then we won't have to really worry about those old retention schedules, because, you know, once it's on the e-filing or Odyssey system, it's just going to be there forever, right? So our plan is just to take what we have and not worry about the old retention schedules, is put everything through the new system.
Is this system beneficial to our law enforcement? Do they have access to any, or is that ever a need?
It's hard for me to say. They, you know, the Odyssey, the Odyssey system is already public-facing through, you know, what, you know, if you were to go on and look up if you had a traffic ticket or something, it would be called Indiana My Case. That's the public-facing version of Odyssey from my end, from the court's end. So, you know, law enforcement can go and look stuff up on there. They, law enforcement also has been, they've been filing tickets electronically since 2012. So we, as part of our transition to Odyssey, we worked with the chief and his officers, and they got scanners and systems through the court system, and we upgraded them to e-filing. What this will do, though, is there are some municipalities, I think Claremont is a good example, they don't have e-filing, so they'll now have a form of that. And then compliance, most of the compliance tickets don't come through an e-ticket situation, so they will then have a avenue to do that as well. So it should improve systems for the cities and towns that use our court as well.
Like a cross-reference, okay.
And it should eventually, well, it will start immediately reducing our supply needs with, you know, paper, stuff like that. We won't be purchasing really much of that anymore. There is still a little paper that we'll be pushing, but it's all internal, and it all eventually gets on the electronic system. The, and you'll see, before I get to the last page, the, the other sheet I gave you, the Excel sheet, that's just basic, basically the, the nuts and bolts of the dispersment breakdown. So you've got every month, and then it shows you to the penny where the dollars are going. So this is basically, I try to, we submit all this to Dan, or the clerk's office, I should say, on a monthly basis, and, and actually, the clerk's office sends some of these dispersments to where they need to go. This is my attempt to try to make it more digestible, if you can believe that, because I could have printed you off the 12 reams, you know, months of data and everything, and I'm sure you all would have wanted me to move on to another profession. But, so if you have any questions about that Excel spreadsheet, take a look, and you can see, you know, where the dollars are going. So what's ahead, what's ahead for 2018? Full implementation of e-filing, as I mentioned, will be mandatory April, I think it's 3rd is the date, so we will move that way. A lot of the attorneys that use us are using e-filing in Marion County Court 13 already, so it should be a pretty easy transition. I think Craig knows how to work a computer, so he shouldn't have too big a problem. We're going to continue providing services to the other municipalities as we have through the interlocal agreement, so we expect that to continue the way it has. And then there's potential for interlocal agreements with other entities. I, I don't know what that'll look like, but I have one bullet point I have down here is House Bill 1140. The General Assembly is currently considering, in addition to the current interlocal statute, which would allow counties and county agencies to engage in interlocal agreements with city and town, or cities and towns that have a city court within their county, to handle ordinance violations and the like. It passed the House of Representatives, 87 to 9, I think was the vote, and it has now been sent to the Senate. I've talked to Representative Kirkoff, Cindy Kirkoff, Representative Justin Moed, and Senator Aaron Freeman about the issue, or about the bill, I should say. Just, there's some, I wanted to seek some clarity on what it meant for consolidated cities and counties, like Marion County is. And, you know, the consent, it doesn't specifically call out consolidated cities and towns in the bill, but the consensus, at least of the three, when I, you know, broached the subject with them, was, you know, they, they didn't disagree with my interpretation, I should say, of, you know, if the statute allows a city to do it, the statute allows a county to do it, it would make sense that a city, consolidate city-county can do the same thing as well. So I'm going to have, it's in the Senate now, so I'll probably have some discussions with Senator Freeman next week. It's in his committee, and just, I'd like some clarification. I don't know if any of the Marion County, Indianapolis agencies will want to use our court. We've had some discussions in the past, but, you know, they're kind of preliminary, and then we had a mayor change, and so I think they just kind of got put on hold for a little bit. So I'd like to have that clarity, though, in the event that those entities would like to pursue that, that opportunity. Because basically, it, it comes down to just like the other cities and towns, and like Beach Grove for, for that matter, you know, our court can just handle things in a more efficient... Beach Grove for that matter, you know, our court can just handle things in a more efficient way. You know, the Marion County Superior Court and Circuit Court do a good job, but we're just, we're more agile, more nimble, we can handle things more efficiently, and some of the lower priority, from a criminal justice standpoint, lower priority issues don't move as quickly through the county system, just because it's much bigger and burdensome. So, we'll, I think this will, this bill will pass the Senate, but I hope to get that clarification.
So your clarity is not that it's going to take away from our court, it's that you might be adding, you'll have additional?
Right. Yeah, I would, basically, it's gonna open up the opportunity for the counties to use city and town courts, which currently is not allowed. And the only, I've just reached out to those individuals to seek clarification on the consolidated city-county aspect. So, I think the interpretation would be that it would be allowed, but I think it's always better to have the clarification if possible. Right. So, yeah, so if anything, it'd be a positive to the city, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't pull filings away. Any other questions?
I do have one question. On the tickets that are issued, it has 802 Main Street, so I'm just gonna give you a guess. I would guess that we get between fifty and a hundred, either telephone calls or people in person coming here to want to pay their tickets, and then we gotta send them over to the police station. Is there any way that could say, like, Wednesday evening only, or?
Oh, that's a good idea. So, it said, it, I think Debbie's actually brought this up before in your office, and it has both addresses on it, because we always, we want to be clear, because we have hearings here, that they have that address and that the office is different. But I've actually not thought of adding the Wednesdays only, but I'll look and see what our options are for that. I'm not sure we can make a change to the e-filing, or, excuse me, the e-ticket system. We can ask, but I know we can make a change to the information sheet. So I can take a look at that myself and see if that can change, but the e-ticket portion might take them a little bit of time. But, yeah, we'll look into it.
Any help would be appreciated.
Well, we also, too, updated our phone tree recently, so when you call in, there's less options, it's more streamlined, so hopefully that will prevent people from hanging up and then trying to call here or somewhere else to get someone to answer, so hopefully that's been an efficiency, and hope, but I'll look into it.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Any other questions?
So efficient, thanks.
Thank you.
Good job, Judge, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. The last item under special presentation is a final follow-up concerning the Indianapolis Power and Light Street Lighting update, and at this time, I'll entertain any questions or comments concerning IPL's proposal to update our street lighting to LED over the next three years. So, the floor is open if you have any questions. I asked the Honorable Judge to stick around and field your questions, and then, when you're complete, then I'll call for a recommendation.
Do you want me to read into the record a letter I've received from a citizen? "I am in favor of Beach Grove participating in this opportunity to convert our IPL lights to energy-efficient LED technology. Advantages of LED lights are many: improved night visibility, enhances public and personal safety, longer lifespan, and lower energy consumption significantly reduces costs for maintenance and electricity. LED streetlights are adjustable to direct light where it is most needed and away from, where it may disturb the peace, for example, a bedroom or bedroom window. Use of this energy-efficient lighting is also very much in keeping with Beach Grove's continued commitment to green initiatives and being good stewards of our environment. Last year, the city invested in replacing our streetlights on Emerson Avenue north of Churchman with LEDs, and it makes sense to continue that conversion throughout the city. The initial capital outlay will be recouped over time, likely within the warranty period of the fixtures, and the savings will continue into the future. We are fortunate, we are fortunate, our city currently has the financial means to take advantage of this opportunity to continue moving forward with conversion to LED streetlights and enjoy the benefits and cost savings sooner, sooner rather than later." And this is from Beth Berg, 64 North Ninth Avenue. Thank you.
Any other comments from council members?
I was wondering if, I don't know, Vito, or Chris, if you guys had anything. I know you had some special information in a meeting that you wanted to share.
We had had a meeting, you wanna go first, you want me to?
We did meet Andrew and Fred for dinner one night to go over just some more outstanding questions that we had had. Actually, when I was there, I forgot my notepad, but I know that Chris took some pretty scrupulous notes at that meeting, and me and him were gonna review some of those numbers, we just haven't had a chance to sit down, but, I mean, if it, it did change, you know, my opinion on it, but, I mean, I definitely would have to sit down with Chris and run those numbers. Everybody's welcome, you know, to take a look at that. I mean, I think you need to compare the savings with the outlay, and then kind of find out where the break-even point is there, and if that's gonna be, you know, within, you know, a reasonable timeframe for Beach Grove, and also, are we going to really start seeing the savings? I mean, I still have the opinion that, you know, as, you know, Beth mentioned in that letter, the overhead and maintenance savings are not gonna be to Beach Grove, those are going to be to IPL. And they own the lights, and et cetera, but, you know, it's kind of the way business is done with utilities, too, I understand that. But, I mean, I definitely would sit down with Chris and go over it some more, so.
The one thing that they did make clear to us, and Andrew was there, is that the savings isn't ju, isn't, let me go back. The bill isn't just the electricity that we use. The bill is the infrastructure, the pole, the fixture, the light bulb, the wire that runs to it, all of that is included in the bill, keeping up that infrastructure. So the only part of that that would decrease, and correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, is the electricity portion. Is that right?
If you don't take advantage of the conversion project that the city of Indianapolis is undertaking, when IPL rolls out LED tariff rates, you will only see a, well, you will not see a reduction, because the only piece that reduces with an LED light is the energy and demand charges. The energy and demand charges for a streetlight are just a fraction of the overall cost, because as Chris mentioned, when you pay your rates now, you have a charge for maintenance, operation, demand, energy, and then infrastructure. And infrastructure is the pole, the arm, the fixture, the, you know, with the current lights, there are ballasts and bulbs and wire and stuff like that. These are, these fixtures are different for LED. But with all of that infrastructure piece, then IPL is allowed to make a return on that. So then, the IURC will tack on a, you know, adjudicated number that they've deemed appropriate for the utility to cover on those pieces. What the conversion project allows you to do is you pay the infrastructure piece upfront. So not only, you will still see a demand, a reduction of the demand charge and the energy charge, because you have the LED technology, you will no longer be paying through your rates over the life of the asset, the infrastructure piece, which is the majority of the charge, because you've paid it upfront. And then there's no return for IPL on that piece, so that, you know, currently, it's right around ten percent is that return. That's gone, because you paid it upfront. We're not, you know, there's no return on an investment there, you made the investment. So that's why the conversion rate, right now, we're, the conversion rate, and Chris, I don't have my notes on that with me, but I believe, I think it was around a hundred and four dollars was the current, the largest light that Beach Grove has in its inventory, that's what the conversion LED rate price would be. We're ballparking an LED tariff rate for a non-converted same, that same light, to be a hundred and eighty-five in that ballpark. And that's a fully baked in, all those things that I just walked through, all that number, and that's probably, that's based on what our current return is. We're in for a rate case, it'll probably be similar, that return number will probably be similar, but that's kind of what we're ballparking, based on commission's past practices, it's about a hundred and eighty-five, so. I know that's a lot, but I hope.
And what was the warranty on those LED bulbs?
The warranty on the fixtures we're going, the IPL's gonna use is ten years. And the return, so, and these numbers are gonna change. IPL just released the RFP for the project two weeks ago, we're expecting bids to come back at the end of this month. So, we'll see what kind of the final numbers are, but right now, the, we think Beach Grove's, based on the reduction of rates, if you do the project, you will recoup your upfront costs around nine, ten years. So, that's the current numbers, and that could come down a little bit, based on what the labor and the fixture price come in at, once we get through the bidding process.
Yeah, there were still several numbers kind of up in the air, because this isn't finalized yet, but I kind of got the gist of it, that, you know, we can pay the amount upfront and recoup that cost over the ten years, or we can keep that three hundred thousand dollars and do with it what we will and leave things like they are now. And ultimately, I think we will, I couldn't exactly get the figures, and that's what Vito and I want to go over. I think that ultimately, it's gonna be a wash, it's not gonna be that much difference. So, you know, plus, as I recall, and help me, Andrew, I'm not, my memory isn't probably as good as a young man, but we, they were saying that we, as soon as we pay, that the light bulbs aren't all gonna get changed over, we would be into the mix with Indianapolis, and at some point, the conversion would happen.
So what we expect to happen is that whoever the winning, the winning vendor is that will do the project, they're going to map out the whole service territory, or map out all the streetlights in the service territory, I should say, that are going to be converted, and then they will do that geographically. So they will start at one point in the service territory, and then they will systematically move, you know, maybe like a clock, or, you know, clockwise or counterclockwise, or something like that, through the service territory. So I don't know if they're gonna start in the southeast quadrant, if they're gonna start in the northwest, we don't know yet, because we don't have a vendor yet. But Beach Grove has, what I do know is they're gonna change about a hundred and seventy-five lights a week. Beach Grove has eight hundred and, around eight hundred lights. So, you know, once Beach Grove's there, if they, if Beach Grove takes advantage of the project, once the project gets to this area of town, it'll, you know, take about two months to get through Beach Grove. So I don't know if that's gonna be at the front end, in the middle, at the back end, we just don't know yet. So, we should know that, though, in the next few months, once we get the bidder selected and their project is outlined.
And then those lights that Beach Grove really isn't responsible for, that are in thoroughfares that Indianapolis takes care of, those would still be on that same schedule, correct?
Right. You, to save costs and to prevent striping and those types of issues, it's gonna move geographically. So when it's in an area of town, regardless of if it's Beach Grove or Indianapolis, or say Speedway in Indianapolis, you know, they'll do them all at that time, when they're in that location.
I just had a comment to make, I mean, if we're, we're thinking about doing this, and this is kind of to the council, you know, this is a lot of money to outlay, do we want to think about adding some more lights at that time? Because there's a lot of areas, unless, you know, each block has only one light at the corner, that's it. And, I mean, talking with IPL, I said, you know, kind of said, we're gonna pay three hundred grand for lights, we're gonna get some extra lights thrown at, and it's not gonna happen that way. But do we want to think about putting some more lights up on the streets? I mean, you walk down my street from Main to, on 10th, from Main to Alton, there's no lights. I mean, I understand that's how it is, but Indianapolis just made a huge investment to increase the amount of lights in areas of the city. Maybe we should do the same thing.
So just to give you a little more information, I mean, whenever you guys want to add more lights, we're happy to put them in, just so you know. But, the, right now, we ballpark, and again, these numbers will fine-tune, once we get the bids back and have the final prices. The Beach Grove's upfront cost would be just shy of three hundred thousand dollars. We're ballparking your reduction to your bill, once the conversion is through the city, to be around thirty grand. And then, so that gets to that nine-to-ten-year window to have your payback, right, of your upfront cost. Right now, we IPL is forecasting that LED bulbs, or, excuse me, LED fixtures, there's no bulb technically, you guys looked at it actually a couple meetings ago, right? There's no bulb, it's a fixture. That the LED fixtures have a life of twenty years. Their industry, some other, I shouldn't say industry, folks, because utilities, they haven't been out for twenty years yet, it's a new technology, right? So, that's why we're kind of saying twenty years, based on the little information, pool of information we have now. Other industry folks, I keep saying industry, not, sort of, not what I mean, any industry folks that are not utilities, I should say, are saying the lifespans are twenty-five to thirty years. So, I mean, you can go online and you can find people saying that they're twenty-five or thirty years. We don't want to be in a situation where we've kind of overextended, and then, you know, then we've got systems that are going down and we don't have the wherewithal to replace them. So that's kind of why, based on the little information that we have, we have twenty years. You know, Vito made mention to O and M costs, operation and maintenance costs, you know, as part of this deal, we are reducing the O and M charge for the LED conversion rate by thirty-two percent, when you compare it to the current rate, because we expect to see, right now, about a thirty-two percent reduction in the operation and maintenance of LED fixtures, as compared to high-pressure sodium. Now, there are LED proponents out there saying that that O and M reduction is more, should be more around fifty percent or sixty percent. There's not enough data out there for us to support that, but there was enough for us to support thirty-two. But part of the agreement was, is, once we have done the conversion, and the LED fixtures have been out there for a few years, when we, when IPL goes back in for a subsequent rate case, which will probably, you know, we're in for one right now, probably be, I don't know, I can't fork, it'll be, you know, five, six, seven years down the road, we will update that O and M number based on the actual data that we have from having the system converted. Okay? So if that is a fifty percent reduction, we'll have, you know, we'll update those numbers to reflect that, so.
One thing else, Andrew, that I couldn't remember, are rates will stay at the lower tariff rate for the life of the bulb, or only for the ten years?
No, for the life of the asset.
So if the, if the bulb lasts for twenty years, then it could well be a windfall for us, or we could, we could recoup, you know, an extra three hundred thousand. However, once the bulb is replaced, it will, at IPL's expense, it will revert to the new rate. Is that accurate?
Well, we, I'd like to think that we are that fine-tuned on the records, but we won't be, you know, if you have eight hundred fixtures that we converted, and one fixture goes bad in year twelve, and it's the only one that's gone bad, you will not likely be switched, you know, we likely won't be billing seven hundred and ninety-nine lights in one, and one on the other, right? I mean, just practically speaking. It's not a, you know, who knows what the systems are like then, but, you know, what we'll probably do is, once we kind of get a, you know, enough that are, that have been switched out, we'll then put you on the current tariff rate, whatever that is. But if they, if it fails, you know, in that warranty window, it just gets replaced on the warranty.
Another thing that I had asked Fred and yourself, and this is something council might just want to know, not saying we would ever do this, but we can rent the utility pole and put our own light on it. So would it be worth going around and asking some type of lighting companies what kind of pricing they could give us to do eight hundred lights? We can, because I believe Fred had mentioned that IURC allows, requires you to allow us to rent space on the utility pole.
Yeah, the federal government does. I would be shocked if you could find a cheaper alternative going that route, because the federal government regulates the rates for pole access, and they have, you know, you would have to pay that, whatever that rate is, I don't know what it is off the top of my head, and then whatever that company is charging you to convert, and then we can take all ours down.
IPL's a lot more well-equipped to handle that conversion and the maintenance, but I'm just letting everybody know that that is something that is available.
The city of Indianapolis kind of spit-balled with that idea for a little bit, early on in our negotiations, and they, I think they, I don't know for certain, but I got the sense that they investigated it a little bit, and then quickly quit talking about it.
Yeah, that's what I figure, if we did the same, would happen, but, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Andrew, well, this.
Go ahead, bud.
Well, it's gonna be in your neighborhood here, so, but this is a, we're talking basically for this project around three hundred thousand, right?
Right now, that's kind of the ballpark.
And there's like, three easy installments, I guess, right? And there are a hundred thousand able to make per year, was that one of the deals?
Well, we, that's kind of what we figured cities and towns would want to do. The city of Indianapolis, I think, is making two payments, that's based on kind of where they are financially. That's based on kind of where they are financially. You know, we had, you know, Chris and Vito asked us this question when Fred and I met with them, and what we're telling municipalities, the smaller municipalities, is we'll figure it out. If you want to do this project, whatever makes it easy for your budgets, you know, one thing that I thought, this is just Andrew Wells thinking here, not the company, but one of the thoughts I had was, well, if you're, you know, 500 or 800 lights that are getting changed out, but you're not till the very tail end of the project, you may not want to spend any money in the first year, right? Because you're kind of looking, you know, you're spending money for something that's not happening for a while. You know, we can figure it out, right? If that's, if it falls that way.
You kind of fall into that next question was, when, when is the, what's the time period on it? And it's, you know, the council agrees to move forward, it's not necessarily, has to be next week, then?
Well, we are, the project starts in April, is where we're ballparking right now. And we're going to, we're going to be ordering fixtures within the next few weeks. So, we're telling municipalities that we would like a commitment, you know, within the next, I would say about now, about month, to know, because we got to, we just got to have the orders in, and the more, the more ball, or, I keep, I'm saying bulbs, too, the more fixtures that we order or submit to the vendor, the lower the price is. Because we're getting, and that's another savings that is baked into the conversion number, is that because the city of Indianapolis is taking its 27,000 lights, so we're ordering 27,000 fixtures for them, and then if we can get another, you know, 3,000 to 5,000 from the municipalities that are in our service territory, just tick that number down for the volume discount, just a little bit more.
Is commitment by approval or verbal, or was commitment by money?
No, we, not money. We'll figure out the financial later. And all the cities and towns are kind of approaching this differently. I think some are going to just have the mayor and the clerk of the city, you know, kind of write IPL letter, or kind of do a, you know, "Hey, we want to take advantage of this, here's our, here's our commitment." Others like this, like Beach Grove is, you know, having a council discussion and some kind of council vote or approval, or something like that. So, you know, IPL's standpoint is, you know, we'll leave it up to you, how you think's appropriate to make the commitment, and then we'll figure out the rest, once we, once you've told us you're serious, and you want to take advantage of it.
Yeah, because, you know, you start in with, and we can look at our budget, but we start in with a budget that's already created for at least still its fiscal year.
Right.
And I didn't mean to interrupt you, go ahead.
No, that, that's my issue. We've already budgeted for 18.
Right.
We have no money budgeted for that.
Right.
That don't mean that we couldn't possibly come up with the money, but the issue is, it's not there right at the moment.
Right.
We're operating the city this year without a tax anticipation warrant for the first time, and, you know, money's going to be tight this year. And so, anyway, that, that's my main question, is when is the first time we would actually have to give IPL money?
I'm not in a position that I can give you a firm date, because, again, we've told the munis, the smaller municipalities that we would, you know, work with them on that flexibility. You know, the city of Indianapolis, we had a firm contract, you got it, but, you know, we're talking millions of dollars, you know, tens of millions of dollars for that product, part of the project. Yeah, you know, so it's a little bit more of an expenditure. So, you know, we've told the smaller utilities, we work with them on that, and, you know, part of that discussion, I think, is also, once we find out where you fit in the schedule, right? You know, I, I can appreciate that, you know, budget's already set for 2018, that things are tight for municipalities. Asking someone to fork over some money two years before they're expected to get anything done is probably a little much. So, we'll figure it out, is basically the answer. We just want to know if you want to take advantage of it.
Are we going to get the same cost as Indianapolis, with them buying a larger quantity than us?
Yes.
Everybody's paying the same price.
For the fixture, the fixture costs, those infrastructure piece costs, and the labor costs, all that is going to be the same.
Okay. And one other question, because I'm not 100% sure of this answer myself, is the actual fixture, that consists of the arm coming out and the bulb?
So, it depends. The project has, will have baked into it a cost for replacement of, and we ballpark, I think we've ballparked it around 5%, don't hold me to that, but this will give you an idea what I'm talking about, that once the conversion project is going throughout the service territory, we're going to find 5% of poles and arms that need replaced, but when they don't need replaced, we're going to leave them up to save costs, right? Which didn't just be baked into the rate back to you guys. But, so the, so it could be poles and, and arms, but most of them will just be the fixture, the wiring, that kind of stuff.
And if someone, let's say, some teenager out there shot one of the bulbs out, is that on our cost, IPL going to replace that? What would happen in a case?
It'll depend when it happens. It'll depend if we'll be able to know it was shot out, you know, some of those that they, I don't know, if it fails, some of that's baked, some of those kind of things are baked in, like squirrels, that's a big, that's one of the biggest failures, is squirrels getting into, some of those are baked into the rates now. So, it just depends what the failure is and why it's being replaced, but most of, most of the failures you will see in that 10-year window will be taken care of by the rate or by the warranty.
Okay. And I hate to keep bothering you.
You're fine.
I had a citizen ask me this question, I didn't know what to, how to answer it. They said that the LED lights burn at a lower heat, and so when snow, ice, whatever gets on them, that they don't melt that off. Do you know anything about that? Do they operate as efficiently, or?
Well, you went completely different direction with the heat rating than I thought you would, because usually, they're talking about, you know, kind of the warmth of the light and the temperature of the light, which, which is more a discussion on what you actually are seeing, not necessarily heat or temperature radiating. I don't know, they answered that. I would, I mean, we don't typically see issues with our current streetlights, you know, just kind of the way it's, the Cobra heads are out there, they're kind of a little bit at an angle, and then, you know, they face down, so, you know, while there's snow and ice on top, rarely, if ever, do we have a problem on the part that's emitting the light, that'll be the same. I'm not sure we've ever really had issues with the ice and snow buildup on the top being a problem, whether it's melting off or not. So, I don't, in the thousands of discussions I've had on LEDs in the last year and a half, that is one thing that's not come up, so I don't know for certain, but I would be hard-pressed to think that it's going to be, that's going to be a problem. Someone would have brought it up, I'm convinced, because of all the crazy things they've brought up so far in these discussions.
Just out of curiosity, what other municipalities, other than Indianapolis, have committed?
We haven't had commitments from others. The others are kind of just in the position where you guys are now, we've had a lot of discussions, they haven't yet fully, just, they're going through the steps like you guys are. But we are, we're having discussions, and they're coming to a close, I think, kind of like you are with Beach Grove, Speedway, Lawrence, Cumberland, and Claremont, I think. Maybe not Claremont, I can't remember if it's Claremont. It's pretty much every municipality in our service territory, except for Monroeville, or not Monroeville, Mooresville, I misspoke, sorry.
Why not them?
They changed out a handful of their lights on their own, and they, they're just kind of in a unique situation. They have a large inventory of lights that if they, and, because every, not all the streetlights in a city's inventory are the same, and they all have different savings, and there are actually a few, not many, it's the very minority, but there's a few that, even with the conversion, it's more expensive than what they're currently paying, and they have a lot of those. And so, they won't see, they would still see an overall savings, but it's not as strong as the city of Indianapolis, city of Beach Grove, Speedway, Lawrence, et cetera. They, you know, you, you all have a similar type inventory, and so, the fixtures, the current fixtures available on the market, and the going rate for labor and stuff is driving a larger savings for those municipalities. So, they're just kind of in an unfortunate position.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
Mayor, it might be inappropriate, but I told Jim I'd do, Jim could not be here tonight, and he just wanted to share that he was in favor of, in favor of the light program, basically. And he told me to go ahead and vote for him, all that part, I'm kidding about. Maybe I'm pushing the envelope a little bit there.
Not too much.
Okay.
We're at the point where we'll have to have a recommendation from the council. You can table this again, which I don't recommend. You can deny the opportunity to team with IPL, or you can approve the agreement to go into street lighting updates with IPL. So, I'll leave it up to the council.
I'll make said motion to go with the conversion, the opportunity to convert the IPL streetlights, and working with IPL, make said motion to go ahead and proceed with this commitment.
Second?
I'll second.
And then we'll vote individually, beginning on my right.
Aye.
I didn't think we were going to vote tonight, but, aye.
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 Let the record show, 6-0. So, Andrew, we will wait for the next step from you folks, and, and go from there. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel, you have been given the minutes of the previous meeting dated Tuesday, January the 2nd, 2018. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or change, corrections.
I'd like to make a comment correction. On the council comments, I know we had a discussion on the importance of making the council comments, pretty much, I mean, the way that the council made the comments, and I wanted to point out that my comment, unless, was not inclusive of everything that I said.
So, what, what?
I can tell you, I went back and looked at the minutes several times, and I can tell you what I said. If you want to, if I can, need to read it in the record, or do you want to go back? And I think you said that you did the transcribing yourself when you?
I don't always know.
Okay. But you can go back and listen, or I can?
What was the gist of it that was missing?
Well, no, it was, I specifically said, Jim Kaufman, congratulations on being named Southside Times Person of the Year, well-deserved. Jim works behind the scenes in so many ways, uniting our Main Street businesses, so they work together, making good progress for the city of Beach Grove. So, it was, it was considerably more than just congratulations to Jim Kaufman, Southside Times Person of the Year.
I will make a motion to adjust Liz's comments to read what she just read.
And I'll second that.
Thank you.
I'd like to call a vote on that, just for the record.
On the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Nay.
Any other corrections to the minutes? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented with the amendment.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Nay.
Public comments, counselor?
Yeah, Jim Kaufman. Good evening, guys. Real quick, come on behalf of the Greater Beach Grove Chamber of Commerce, a couple announcements for the chamber. We are still currently looking for a new executive director. The last person resigned in December. So, we have a few interviews scheduled for this week with some well-qualified individuals, so hopefully, one of those people will fit the bill, and hopefully, we'll have them hired in the next week or two. On Thursday, we have the, our monthly luncheon, it is at the Hornet Park Community Center at 11:30. Mayor Buckley will present the state of the city at that time. Well, it is catered by Stacked Pickle, they're off of Southport.
What date, did you say that was?
Thursday.
This Thursday?
Correct. 11:30 to 1:00. Luncheon is sponsored by Franciscan Health this month. So, again, at the Hornet Park Community Center, you can register RSVP online at the chamber website. I'd like to have you guys there, if you guys are able to attend. Our third annual community health fair is scheduled for Saturday, March 10th. That'll take place at the Beach Grove Middle School. The robotics club will be there, they will be doing presentations. Liz mentioned them earlier, they will be there during that time. It is sponsored by Franciscan Health, again. They stepped up and sponsored this event, again, same as last year. So, we will have free shredding brought to you by Offshred, paper shredding, and then also recycling brought to you by Hannah's Record and Recycling. They will be there onsite as well, free to the public. So, a lot of free health screenings, activities for the kids, police and fire departments will be there. It'll be a good day for the community, so, it'll be free, so please plan on attending. So, that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to committee reports. You heard from the youth council, you have a copy of the ABC report, the Greenscape Commission Compliance and Public Safety. Financial report, Dan.
Good evening, counselors. In January, we made the following payments. 2012 bond payment, $110,887.50. 2013 police car leases, $13,354.60. 2013 fire vehicles, $13,656.95. 2016 RDC refunding bond, $248,520. The stormwater fund, as of 1/31/2018, had a balance of $187,684.12. We filed 225 lien releases for the last half of 2017. Lien releases are kept up to date. We rolled over from 2017 to 2018, and the annual report will be advertised in the Indy Star per state statute. The 100R was completed on the gateway, as well as the debt management report. I am continuing to work on the gateway to complete it, to complete it before the deadline. As you are all aware, we did not acquire a tax anticipation warrant this year. As of January 31st, 2018, without this bond, we still had a balance in the corporate bank account of $3,579,254.47. On January 31st, 2012, we had a balance in the corporate account of $2,522,938.71, and that was after having a tax anticipation bond deposit of $2,375,191.10. Community events can be added free of charge by emailing me at danmcmillan@beachgrove.com. Thanks to the website volunteers who continue to keep it updated at no cost to the taxpayers. Financial reports, dead service, bank balances, and more can be found on the city website at www.beachgrove.com. As always, if you have any question, my door is always open. Thank you. Respectfully submitted, Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer, City of Beach Grove. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I have one, and looking at other, just kind of by accident, other communities, that the gateway doesn't seem to be a friendly or an easy system to be involved with.
No, it's absolutely not. That's what's making this job harder than what it's ever been, because every year, they keep adding more and more on there. The gateway started the first year I was in office, in 2012, there was very little on it. Now, there's very little that's not on it, and so, like I say, it, it's good, but it's a lot of work. Just keeping up with that is a full-time job.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the clerk? That completes committee reports. We'll move into unfinished business, carried over from the last meeting. This evening, we want to bring back up the council's appointment to the redevelopment commission. At this time, I'll defer to the council president.
Well, I'm going to apologize here for a little bit, but we had a name mentioned, was it from?
Tara Wolf.
Where'd that come from? Who?
Chris.
She, she's the young lady that sits here. I was going to read a statement by her tonight.
Okay, go right ahead.
You want me to go ahead?
Yes.
Tara and her husband recently moved into the city. They've been attending council meetings and she was very, well, not upset, but she had wished she had been able to attend, but their vacation fell on tonight, this week, so they were not able to attend. But she gave me this statement to read dated February 5th, 2018. Dear council members, my name is Tara Wolf and I moved to Beach Grove one year ago tomorrow, February 6th, 2017. You may recognize me from the front row of the last couple of city council meetings. I moved to Beach Grove from Lafayette where I was heavily involved with the community and Purdue University. Now that my husband and I have settled in, I am ready to serve our new community that we are so proud to call home. As our first order of business, we made certain to meet our neighbors. We were sincerely welcomed by all and have enjoyed gatherings and conversations together over the last year. Since we moved to town, we have been enjoying the park, walking the track, walking down Main Street, and patronizing local businesses. Even our dog Duke has made new friends in town. I currently serve the Indiana Department of Natural Resources as Communications Director. In this role and roles leading up to it, I have worked with organizations to further their message and promote their goals through events, campaigns, newsletters, social media, and media campaigns. I have worked to create goals and put plans in place to reach them. My professional experiences have prepared me to serve on the redevelopment commission. And so she would respectfully ask that we would consider her tonight for that position.
I do remember, she introduced herself to those that were here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
She knew she couldn't be here. Even last month, she knew she couldn't be here tonight because their vacation fell on tonight.
I know, I called and invited her to attend the last meeting and I didn't get a call back, but I, you know, I think she would serve well.
No, thank you. Did anybody have any other names that they wanted to bring up? For the RDC?
I know, Dennis, you had Mr. Rubidu.
She withdrew.
Okay.
And does anybody, based upon, have feel comfortable tonight about moving forward with this or does anybody want to speak up in order to maybe table it to another time?
I say if that's the only name, let's go.
Yeah, okay.
She sounds very qualified.
So I'll make a motion to nominate Tara Wolf as our, as the council's appointment to the RDC this year.
Second.
First and the second, and all those in favor of the nomination of Tara Wolf signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Mayor, new RDC appointment?
Okay. Very good. Next order of business is General Ordinance Number 11, 2017. It's an ordinance that was first introduced in, at the December meeting to amend the salary ordinance, and it was tabled by the council at the January meeting. Now I'm asking for a motion to withdraw the ordinance. I'm not, I'm no longer interested in pursuing that. If we decide to, we'll pick it up in the next budget cycle. So I'll leave it up to the council, but I ask that General Ordinance Number 11, 2017 be withdrawn.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that General Ordinance Number 11, 2017 be withdrawn.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you very much for that. General Ordinance Number 12, 2017, is up for third and final reading this evening. This is pursuant to the Parks Department. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to waive the rules to read by title only.
I'll make said motion to waive the rules and read General Ordinance Number 12 by title only.
Second.
We'll start individually on my left.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
This time, I'll ask the clerk to read General Ordinance Number 12, 2017, into the record by title only, please.
General Ordinance Number 12, 2017, is an ordinance that establishes the Beach Grove Parks and Recreation Department's Non-Reverting Operating Fund.
Thank you, Dan. General Ordinance Number 12, 2017, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion to approve General Ordinance Number 12.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. That concludes unfinished business, carried over from the last meeting.
Don't you usually pass the ordinance around when we sign?
That's, that's something, that's just for your information only.
No, she's talking about the signature page.
Yeah. Do we usually pass the ordinance around with, okay, that's all right.
It doesn't have to be.
Okay, just asking. It's not usually ways double.
Under new business this evening, counsel, we have four items. The first ordinance, or the first item is the introduction of a new ordinance, General Ordinance Number 1, 2018, concerning stormwater fees. Back in 2014, the common council passed an ordinance that established stormwater fees and they set the rates over a period of four years. An ERU is, they charge per ERU, and the ERU was $2.25, excuse me, $1.50, I'm sorry. And each house is one ERU, and then businesses are multiple ERUs. So they established it to correct drainage problems throughout the city. And one of the criteria of this ordinance that the council approved was that the city was not to enter into any debt through 2018. Dave, Dave was on the council and Dan was here and Craig, so chime in if I'm, if there's anything you want to add or there's something that I'm saying that's not accurate. So what they wanted to do was they wanted to adjust the rates over a four-year period. So beginning on the first day of August, 2014, the city began charging $1.50 per ERU. In the first day of 2016, the city increased that to $2.25 per ERU. The first day of 2017, that went up to $3.00 per ERU. And then the first day of this year, it went up to $3.75. And that has completed the increase, step increase over four years. So what this ordinance is tonight that I'm introducing is to cap the ERU fee at $3.75, not to increase it anymore beginning next year. It's already set at $3.75. You won't see it on your sewer bill until, what, Dan, March or April?
Yes, one of the two, depending on when our billing cycle is.
So before I introduce it into the record, what I just passed out to you was a list of cities throughout Indiana who have established stormwater fees. And if you just look at the first page, an ERU for the city of Beach Grove is every 2,620 square feet. That constitutes an ERU for any property other than residential. And ours is capped now, ours is stopped at $3.00. The fee is $3.75. The year that the stormwater fee was established and our population. I give this to you so you can compare it. Don't do it tonight, just look at it down the road. The average ERU fee in the state of Indiana is $5.00 per ERU. That doesn't mean we have to take it to $5.00, it's just the average, and that is for your information. So also in this ordinance, at the end, there is a list, we put in there a list of projects that we've already done and what's on this list that need to be corrected, plus what we have done since this ordinance was implemented back in 2014. And the clerk reported tonight that we have a balance now of $187,000 in the stormwater. That is to correct drainage problems. Brad, I don't know if you want to chime in, how this has helped you?
Good evening, council. Pleasure to speak to you. So I've been here 10 years and until this was established, we always had to rob the sewage works budget to do stormwater projects or anything stormwater related. It was unfortunate back in, I think it was 2006, when they withdrew out of the Indianapolis stormwater, they didn't establish a fee. They withdrew and then they didn't impose a fee at that time. So it wasn't until we put a fee on this that we then had revenue to start doing projects. And we were keeping a list this whole time. Wesler had done a really nice job of keeping a stormwater master plan and we had about 30 to 40 projects that just kept piling up every year. And so we really had no revenue stream to do them. So this has really allowed us to start knocking those out and it's been a real benefit to the city and to the citizens to be able to see that these are being done now. So I think it's been a great thing. Thanks.
I was just gonna state, I think when we took this out and started this, we stated at that time it would be for projects only. I know there was an exception or two, I can't remember what it was, it's been four years ago, but everything we've spent pretty much has went to projects in the city.
Well, we have, if you just think about this, we have corrected drainage problems in 1500 Block of Southern, 15th in Detroit, 1800 Buffalo, 23rd and Southern, all of Royal Road, the Lick Creek stabilization, Bell Fountain from, actually, the 800 Block of Bell Fountain, 9th and Buffalo, which I think is the best project that we have done since I have been mayor. Tyson, the drainage that are in front of the Amtrak parking lot on Garstang, Shaft and Bell Fountain, Butler Street, the Beach Grove Little League parking lot, Grove Wood Place, Main Street, and we just completed North Bend Road. And Churchman Avenue, the sidewalk project, was the second largest stormwater drainage project that this administration has completed. These are major, major projects that have been done since the first day of 2012, and we have not issued any debt for any of this. So, and the clerk, this year, in the stormwater portion of the sewage works budget, has budgeted $350,000 for drainage improvements. So we are going to be working throughout the year to correct more drainage problems through our city, and we have a whole list of them. What I'm asking guidance from you folks is where do you want to go with ERU fees? Do you want to cap them at 3.75 or what would you like to do? And that's the purpose of this ordinance this evening. So I'll open it up for discussion.
Mayor, I do agree that at the moment of capping them, because I think something mentioned a minute ago was when these fees were no longer taken out, they were, actually, you saw them in your tax, your tax bill, I believe. It came, that's where the money came from at the time. And when they were removed, I figured there was probably during that time, at least $200,000 that wasn't collected. And the money's collected to actually go back into the infrastructure, you know? So it's just a good thing to see that this administration got these fees at least back on board. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Dave, would you care to comment? You were in on the council when we did this. If you have any comment on it?
Oh, I think it's, I think it's reasonable. I know that, I can't believe we've actually done this many projects, but I believe it. I mean, it's just a lot of projects. And if, the one thing I would say that I can always remember that sticks in my head is when Phil Garganis come in here and brought in about seven or eight spots in Beach Grove, and I don't know if we've ever done those, but some of them were very costly. Some of them, you'd be shocked at the pictures that he brought in. And I think it's one of the best things we've done as a council. And I, I can tell you, I see some of your things on here. I know back when I looked at this, I looked at other class, the same, tried to get the same size cities as Beach Grove, and just like your rates here, our rates were fairly low compared to some. I mean, well, they were, $1.50 was real low compared to most of them. And 3.75, I think, I think it's a good buy. I, I know, nobody likes an increase, but if you're gonna live here, you gotta pay the palper, I guess. And I think that's a fair amount.
And I want you to be cognizant of the fact that it doesn't matter who is the clerk, it doesn't matter who sits on the council, it doesn't matter who the mayor is, you are always, the elected officials are always gonna have to deal with drainage issues. So it's important that this gets maintained and you have funding coming in to make these corrections when they come up. So...
I know that when we talk about our community, our community-based initiatives and quality of life is such an important part of that, and I think the residents who've dealt with drainage issues and when those get fixed, they're so grateful and it improves their home, it improves the quality of life and it proves, improves their property value. So I think doing this for our residents, and I, I don't think I've had a complaint about people, from anyone, saying that we've improved something for them, especially when it's quality of life and it improves their property value as it does.
Any other questions or comments?
Is it gonna be sustainable, I mean, at 3.75 for how long? I mean, I guess, if I'm hearing this correctly, because I mean, this is the first I've looked at this, so the 3.75 goes into a fund to address stormwater drainage issues for our residents, streets, et cetera. Well, I mean, just like with anything, the cost of fixing those things goes up. Supplies, labor.
And the council may have to, down the road, adjust the rates. But for now, we're just trying to be, the rate automatically went up 75 cents per month. And we're just trying to, to see where we're at and to be cognizant of the fact that we're asking for more money and just leveling off and, and not ask the rate payer for a bunch of money.
I just didn't know if it would be feasible to decrease the increase, whether in going up 75 cents every year, that if we got to a certain point now where we're at a surplus, do we just decrease how much is increased even every year so we can make sure we're ahead of it? I would hate to see something happen where we all of a sudden don't have this surplus. We haven't touched the rate for five years and now we really have to jack it up.
Well, to me, I would not decrease this. I would keep it right where we're at.
I'm not saying decrease it, but decrease the amount it is increasing each year. Now it's at 75 cents.
It's after, after, if you pass this, that's the end of it unless this council increases it.
How is that any difference than the current ordinance though, Dennis?
It isn't.
The schedule stays or ends at 3.75?
It's in right now, 3.75. I just want to cap it right there at 3.75.
Well, it's not, I mean, Duffer's right. It's not any different. We'd says the only other increase is in January 1st, 2018. So it doesn't outweigh any other increases. I don't, I guess, I don't see why the ordinance needs to change.
Well, you can, I'm just locking it in, I mean, to get, to, to address this until the council wants to change it.
Till we visit it again.
Till you visit it again.
I just think it does send out a message and it does address the issue. There's, what you say is true, but I think it does send out a message. There's, what you say is true, but I think it does send out a message.
Vito, one thing I'd like to correct you on, there's no surplus. That's, I mean, there's millions of...
My fear, I mean, rainy day fund, literally.
Right. No, we have millions of dollars of projects we could do if we had the money for them. But let me tell you, when the mayor and I first started in here, we were getting calls on a weekly basis. It's rare for me to get one and I'm sure he's the same way. So I think we've got it under control. And I think the 75 cent increase will increase it that much more. And next year, if we need to come back and adjust it, we can do that.
But I get your point, Vito. I mean, we've seen it with sewer hikes a long time ago where if something is left and you don't increase it a little bit and then all of a sudden you realize you've been using the general fund to support the utility. And then all of a sudden you got to hike up in order for, and I get that, but it seems like we're within reason to do that right now, so.
Just want to make sure, get everybody else's opinion. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
The projects that you have listed on here, Dennis, that Westler had, is that the projects that have been completed?
The ones that are blacked out have been completed.
Oh, okay.
They do make it hard to read. You have a good memory.
The others have not yet, then?
Nope.
I had gotten a call from, I can't say a constituent because they're not in my district, but along Redfern, just east of 9th Street, behind those houses there to the north. Has that been addressed?
No, that's coming this spring and this summer.
Well, that was the North Bend project, wasn't it?
We did, we just finished North Bend.
Right.
But that Redfern's right there.
Redford and Killian.
Redfern and North Bend are, those houses back up to each other.
Right. And that's the one we just did.
Is it?
Yeah. And that was a horrible problem for years.
Yes. So that's been taken care of?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Oh, okay. That's excellent.
And Councilor Lampkin, I think on page three, down at the bottom where it says 369 North, does that address?
I was, there was an address on here that's very familiar to me and that's why I was grinning at hard department head. And it's, it'll happen, right? And it's been on the books for some time.
At least it's on the sheet.
It's on the sheet. I was happy to see that.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll ask the clerk to read General Ordinance Number 1, 2018 into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 1, 2018 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances pursuant to stormwater fees established for the city of Beach Grove. Whereas the city of Beach Grove establishes stormwater fees on August 1st, 2014, and issued step increases that continue through 2018. And whereas the common council mandated that funds collected be used to correct drainage problems and other tasks associated with drainage and stormwater matters without the issuance of debt. And whereas residents are now witnessing drainage corrections in our city and these fees ensure that future drainage corrections will continue to be made. And whereas our DPW director is mandated to file an annual report, MS4, on our diligence towards addressing drainage matters with the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to cap the fees collected pursuant to our stormwater utility. Now therefore be it further affirmed that the common council desires that the following amendment be inserted in Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove, deleting its entirety. Section 50.202 Stormwater User Fees. A calculation of stormwater user fees. The fee per one equivalent residential user, ERU. One, effective August 1st, 2014, at $1.50. Two, effective January 1st, 2016, $2.25. Number three, effective January 1st, 2017, $3. Number four, effective January 1st, 2018, 375. Replace with the following. Section 50.202 Stormwater User Fees. A calculation of stormwater fees. The fee per one equivalent residential user shall be $3.75. Therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to cap the fees charged pursuant to the collection of stormwater fees. Therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance only applies to Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove and no other chapter. Therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance shall go into effect immediately after passage by the common council, signed by the council president pro tem, attested by the clerk treasurer and signed by the mayor.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve General Ordinance Number 1, 2018 on first reading only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear it on second reading only at the March City Council meeting. Thank you, council. General Ordinance Number 2, 2018, is up for approval on first reading only. And that is a ordinance that amends Chapter 100 of the Streets and Sidewalks for the city of Beach Grove. And what I would like to do for the council is to take you through how we assess roads, curbs, driveway approaches, lead walks and sidewalks. And what now is required when we do roads. If you go back to the back of the ordinance, you'll see this page here. And that is the city of Beach Grove pavement asset management plan. So what we do is the state of Indiana and NDOT has mandated that we do this. So we inventory every road that we have. And it comes out on a sheet that looks like this. And it will show the street names, the length of the street, the type of surface. And then at the far right, you'll see a number, 1 through 10. So when we see a number between 1 and 3, that's an indication of a poor road. 4 through 6, rating is average. 7 through 10 is good. So when we apply for funding for roads or when we do paving of local roads, we seek out the numbers between 1 and 3. And those are the roads that we focus on. So...
Are the ones crossed out the ones we've already done?
Already done.
Okay.
So we're getting better with our roads. We still have twos and threes that we have to focus on. So when we do our paving this year, we'll be doing, all of these roads that we paved will either have a rating of 1 or 2.
I guess, why do we pave all these roads that were sevens and sixes?
That's just...
Well, some of them are, we haven't paved any of them yet.
Maybe like the...
That's just the, it's the way they rank, isn't it?
If I look at like the first page, 27, 28, 29?
Yeah. Because...
There's 2, there's 6, 7, 6.
This is on our original asset management plan.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's been updated since we've paved, so I cross these off.
Okay.
That 7 used to be a 1, 2 or a 3.
Okay.
I think I only see 1, 1 now.
Yes.
That's Butler.
Adelaide. Adelaide is the only one we have left and that gets paved this spring.
I see Butler on here. Oh, it's already been done.
It's done.
Oh, good. Those poor people. That was horrible.
So that's how, that's how, that's how this works. We'll sit down, we'll look at where these roads are and then we'll put together a paving package. And then it will get submitted to the board for approval. And then we seek bids. Tomorrow starts another process for, to start paving roads again. So the current ordinance council that we have for local roads and local streets and sidewalks calls for 50-50 match on sidewalks. I don't know, Dan, you might want to chime in on this. I don't know of anybody since 2012 that has asked for to pay for their sidewalks in front of their house.
No. Not to me personally. And when you and I first started with sidewalks, we didn't know, I said, I think I'll throw $50,000 into sidewalks. I didn't know if it'd go here to where the mayor sat right there. But anyway, we got with some people and got the Safe Sidewalks, the schools grant. And we turned that 50,000 into 500,000. And so that's where we've gone with this. And I don't think there's been any sidewalks in a budget since probably Elton Gishwiler's time. I could be mistaken on that, but you know, I just think we're letting our money work for ourselves too.
So now what happens is when we go pave a road, if there's sidewalks, we inspect the sidewalks and if the panels are bad, we take it out and fix a sidewalk when we're doing the road. And any road that meets a sidewalk at an intersection, we don't have any choice. We have to make that ADA compatible. So all of these ramps have to be done. So that's in the new ordinance that, hey, when we go out and look at these roads, when there's sidewalks there, we fix sidewalk panels that are bad and we have to come into compliance with APs and ramps. So all of that is in this ordinance. And this ordinance only reflects what we're doing right now. It updates, the ordinance that we're working off of was made in 1967. So now this brings it up to to current, what we're doing right now. And what happens when somebody calls in and says, my sidewalk's bad, my driveway approach is bad, the curbs are bad in front of my house, or I don't have a lead walk or whatever? What happens when they call in and ask about it? What happens is, it generally comes in here, it gets sent out to Brad and Brad goes out and inspects it. And he establishes a list and grades it on how severe it is. And then you folks, the clerk puts money into the budget, you folks approve the appropriation and he can take the appropriation and go off of that list and work to fix sidewalks. That's how this all works. And the only thing we're doing is we're putting it all down in writing. So everybody has a clear understanding of how does this work? And Brad, did you want to comment on this as well?
Well, the mayor's correct. I do keep a spreadsheet. I really try to use time as the main factor as to when I complete work. I try to knock the people out that have been on the list the longest. The 45, 50,000 that we have doesn't go as far as you would think. I think I have right now probably roughly 25 sites on my list that's to do. I think we've done 30 to 40. But yeah, I try to, I try to knock them out as to the oldest ones. But there are times when severity of the complaint or issue will come into play and I'll bump things around if something's far worse, that's maybe a little newer than something that's been on there for a while that isn't as bad. So I do use some judgment there. But overall, the mayor's correct, that's exactly how we do it. And it's nice now to have a funding source to go out and knock some of these out. You know, it's just like the stormwater thing. There's a point where you're just building a list unless you have some money to actually do the work. So this has been a good thing for us.
Do we have trouble with snowplow, with snowplows damaging areas? Is that something that you get called or fix those?
It's not that frequent.
Not that frequent.
It really is actually very rare. We had maybe two years ago, one of the newer panels on Main Street, they have truncated dones or those plastic sheets that they put into the ADA. I think we clipped one of those. That's one of the only ones I can think of. I'm sure there's some curb damage that's random throughout snow plowing seasons. But to actually get a call to say that you hit something with a plow, yeah, it's pretty rare. All right? Thanks.
So what's important for everybody here is that in the new ordinance, it calls that the city does an asset management plan as often as necessary. This is really important for funding to the state of Indiana and NDOT for roads. And we have taken advantage of Community Crossing Grant. And we've gotten like $800,000 in the last two years for paving roads. But this is mandated. So whoever the elected officials, you know, whoever the council is, whoever the mayor is, clerk, you got to make sure that this gets done. This is a vital piece of information for this city and the future of the city. And this is how we base what gets paved. So at the end of the ordinance, there is just a list of sidewalk panels and things that have been done. We don't do a whole lot of lead walks, curbs, approaches, sidewalk panels. Some of these were done by Citizens Energy when they put new water mains in. But for the most part, this is what the city has done since 2012. And it's quite a bit, but we have a ways to go. And we have a lot of sidewalks. And we need to, you know, when the weather breaks again, we'll start back in and we'll do more sidewalk panels and...
And you're replacing bad ones, is that what you're doing?
Yes.
What about like along 13th Street there? From Main going south to the park on the west side of 13th? There's no sidewalk at all there.
Where?
Across the street from Dan's house.
Oh, on the west side?
Yes.
See, that would be a recommendation. I mean, we put new sidewalks in on North 9th when we paved. We're getting ready, when the weather breaks, we're going to put in, we're going to go down in Kevin's district on South 6 there at Ash. They put sidewalks in there on 6th Street where they hit Ash. There's a stretch there where they didn't put any sidewalks. But throughout the city, it's hit and miss on, well, how come they didn't put sidewalks here? This doesn't make any sense. You know, you got sidewalks and all of a sudden it stops. So it just takes time to sort through all of this. That would be a good recommendation. I mean, you know, people walk on it, don't they?
Oh, they walk over there all the time.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of times there's middle school kids that walk home through that area. And I don't know why they insist on walking on the side of the street without sidewalks because the other side does have them. But they do.
Any other questions or comments on this ordinance? There's one more thing that I want you to look at. And it would be on the third page, 100.03, subsection D. "The city shall require that fire hydrant markers be installed. Proper street markings are in place concerning crosswalks, stop bars and lane recognition markers and any other road marker required for compliance when a local road is repaved." Now, the next sentence is vital. "The city shall also install autonomous markings on roadways once legislation requiring as such is approved by NDOT." The legislature now is, it's going through the state to whereas they are going to require markings on the road for autonomous vehicles. Probably by 2020. That means driverless vehicles. So we're going to have to, they're going to mandate us to do it when it passes. So I just want to be ready for it. So the thought of a car going down the road with no driver is spooky, but it's coming. And I want the city to be ready for it when it happens. So that's it. And any other questions or comments? We'll move to... We'll move to, it's a rather lengthy ordinance, so I would entertain a motion to waive the rules and read by title only on first reading.
I'll make a motion to read by title only.
I'll second.
There's a second? We'll vote individually.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
And I'll ask the clerk to read General Ordinance Number 2, 2018 into the record by title only.
General Ordinance Number 2, 2018 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 100 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove pursuant to local road and sidewalk improvements.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 2, 2018 is up for approval on first reading only tonight. This time I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear it on second reading only at the March meeting. Thank you, council. Next order of new business is a small presentation by the Fire Department concerning emergency medical services request for billing, ambulance billing. So I'll defer to the Fire Chief. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I want to present to you this evening about our Beach Grove ambulance rates. And I wrote down in a little paper here, some areas of concern to discuss with you. And the first, I'd just like to break this down for ambulance billing, our ambulance rates. Every year we take a look at rates, evaluate what they are, how they look like to the citizens, and make sure they're compatible and in conjunction with the Marion County rates. When you look at the Beach Grove ambulance rates, we have separate rates for the citizens of Beach Grove and for outside the city. And what I'm asking, if we take a look at our current rates and have them across the board, be the same for out of city and in city. And the first thing you say when you see that is, how will that affect the taxpayer of Beach Grove? We don't want to have any impact to the taxpayers, but the way that our rates are established now, they're evaluated by Medicare, Medicaid, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and they take a look at these, and we have our commercial and auto insurance people take a look, and they wonder why we charge a different rate for the citizen of Beach Grove, but if we go across the street, we're charging double. So that throws a red flag. By having them...
Why does that throw a red flag?
Because the Medicare and Medicaid, they pay off of the county rates in general. And they're take a look and they're saying, well, why are you charging this rate? Why does it only cost this much for ambulance here on 25th Street, but if you go across the street, it's going to cost me more?
Well, isn't it obvious though? The citizens here, their taxes pay that.
Exactly.
They pay your salary.
So, they pay, they pay the rate.
And why shouldn't they get that break as opposed to the guy across the street that don't pay your salary?
But what we're going to do, here's how we do it, we're going to adjust that rate, and keep them the same across the board. But for the citizens of Beach Grove, we're going to go ahead and give them a discount for being a citizen and self-pay. We can discount it by 65%, and it'll still stay the same rate for our Beach Grove taxpayers.
How are you going to discount it? I worked in health insurance for a long time, and if somebody sends a claim in, they don't go self-pay, the insurance company processes a claim.
Currently, we self-pay now 40%.
40% of your people you respond to for medical services self-pay 40% of them?
Anyone who self-pays is discounted 40%.
What I'm saying is, is that before or after the insurance has processed that claim?
Right now, our current collections rate, we receive about 30% of our self-pays that are sent out.
What does that mean? What do you say?
Yeah, that doesn't...
If we send out, say for $100 in self-pay, we only receive $30. Only 30% of that money comes back.
Only $30?
So if you guys want to raise that self-pay, I mean, I don't think you want to lower it, but I think we want to keep it the same or keep the same discount for Beach Grove taxpayers.
But my question there is, and I agree with what you're saying, okay, but if I get into an auto accident or I need ambulance services, Beach Grove Fire will send either me a bill or send it to my insurance company. That insurance company will then process that claim, and then I will pay you what the insurance company says I owe you.
And...
And at that point, are you going to apply the discount?
Those, with the commercial and auto insurance, it's, they usually pay the cap of usual or customary amount.
Exactly.
And the auto insurance payer, you pay like 80, 20, or 70, 30. And with that discount, MedBill adjusts for what it's sent out to your auto insurance company.
I'm seeing...
So it's already billed out.
Auto insurance.
Correct, with the discount.
Say that last sentence again, Chief.
MedBill bills it out to the insurance company with the discount. So you're not getting a huge bill, and then there's a percentage taken off of it. It's already completed by MedBill.
Currently?
Yes.
And so you're saying that you would want them to bill at the regular rate that they charge the people outside of the city? And how will that affect the Beach Grove citizen that...
They apply the Beach Grove discount to it, so the rates will remain the same current. You can keep it the same now if you think you need to adjust that, if you think it needs to go up $20 or not, you know, that's, that's up to this council. This money here goes back to the general fund. So it's just taking a look at these rates, evaluating. It was kind of eye-opening talking to Dave, because Dave understands the insurance, and when he looks at it and how it looks to the commercial insurance, when we're billing two different rates.
It's called redlining.
How do you, when you currently have that issue now, Chief, what do you do? When someone comes back, do you have to file more paperwork, or you have to explain it over the phone, or what do you do to make them understand?
Currently, right now, we have contracts with, you know, your Medicare, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Medicare, the commercial insurances. We haven't had any legal issues. And I think that's part of this council, to want to say, hey, we wanted to avoid any legal issues in the future, make sure everything's above board, and make sure it's correct. If you take a look at the other ambulance rates for other fire departments, they don't have the huge adjustments for in-city, out-of-city. It's the same across the board. So that's all I'm asking, is bring us to the same standard across Marion County, what the other departments are doing, making sure it's correct, it's the direction this board wants to go, and we'll move on with it.
So you're saying, do away with the 65% or whatever it was rebate or whatever you want to call it that the citizen gets, that the Beach Grove citizen gets? I guess I'm not completely following what you're wanting to do yet, Chief.
Bring your ambulance rates the same across the board. For example, in-city rate for a BLS ambulance is $700. Make it across the board to $1,300. You increase from a 40% discount to 65% discount for that citizen in Beach Grove.
But if we're giving them a discount, how does that affect the insurance companies and what you were just saying about, they wonder why it's different? Why would then, how are you going to explain to them that you're giving Beach Grove residents a discount?
We do it now. We do it now, but we do it on paper by having separate rates. This is just having an across-the-board rate and then apply Beach Grove discount to your citizens.
Because Medicare, Medicaid, the insurance companies are not looking at where you live. They're, they're charging a fee for that service, and, and they're going to flag that when they see that you've got these discrepancies for the same travel time for a service to one person to another. They're, these insurance companies are not, they don't look to see, they don't care if you live in Beach Grove or not. So you're just trying to get them across the board at the same, and then give the discount with the MedBill, give that discount to those, to the Beach Grove residents through the MedBill, and it looks legitimate for the charges.
Absolutely correct.
Okay.
How do you, from an insurance perspective, Dave, what do you think of this?
I think it'd be a good thing. I know that the company, I worked four years ago, got in trouble for that. We charged Beach Grove residents a certain rate for auto. We charged Indianapolis, because it's intercity, a higher rate by about 50%. And the Department of Insurance come down on us and fined us like $300,000. And that was in like 1994. So then we had to make our rates the same for Beach Grove and surrounding, as they are intercity and Indianapolis.
Is that primarily just for commercial property casualty insurance, or does that help?
No, it's property and casualty. This is redlining, it's redlining, I don't care if it's helping or not.
I mean, I know with the thing with like Blue Cross and Blue Shield Medicare, they have their, okay, I'm not exactly sure what the code is for an ambulance run, but it's like A1294. And then you bill units, whether that be five miles, 10 miles, 15 miles. They're going to set their discounted rate on that, whatever it is, within that network. So, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, you might bill them 1394, but if you're contracted with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, they say, well, our discounted rate for that is 600 bucks, you guys can only collect 600.
Right now, Blue Cross, Blue Shield charges, we can only collect 22%. So that's our guaranteed rate from Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
So if we did what you're saying, then they would pay 22% of the...
That's, that's the way it is currently, and that wouldn't change. Currently, Medicaid only pays .06% of an ambulance run, and that won't change. We can't change those. Those are what's already established, and they're county-wide. Medicare's also 22%. That's the max we're going to get from these people. Our ambulance runs go up. Currently in January, we made 496 runs. Today's the 5th of February, we've made over 90 ambulance runs in February. The runs still come in, we still provide the service to the citizens, we provide the service to...
You've made 90 runs in five days?
Yes.
Really?
Ambulance runs.
Wow.
And we provide the service. More and more, there's less collections. We still go out, wear and tear on the equipment, fuel charges, personnel. IV equipment's gone up drastically due to Hurricane Maria that hit Puerto Rico. There's a shortage in supplies, there's shortage in medications. Medications keep going up. I'm just trying to make you aware of the issue, that could be a legal issue, see if you want to act upon it, ensure that there's funding in the future to continue to provide the service we currently do.
Because they're looking so closely, they're scrutinizing the Medicaid, Medicaid care fraud is just such a big thing, and would that fall into that potential? I mean, that's...
When they take a look at the county rates, it's, it's just out there, it's blatant. You see Beach Grove charges two different rates. And of course, they would ask, you know, why does this happen, or can you explain this?
And if there were repercussions from that, we would have to cover those charges for those penalties. And they're big penalties.
And, you know, in this, and I don't want you to make a decision tonight. I'd be glad to meet with you guys, one-on-one, over the phone, through email, discuss this, even meet with MedBill, and come in and see how this would look to you, what we can do to ensure that the citizens of Beach Grove don't incur any additional charges. So, just up for discussion and topic, and see what you guys think.
I got a question. Let's say our ambulances are out and Indianapolis has to come in, are you still going to be able to discount the Beach Grove citizens if they have to take a ride in the Indianapolis ambulance?
No, Indianapolis comes in, they charge their rates to the citizens of Beach Grove. And our rates for Indianapolis are the same. We charge them the same what they charge their own people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight, it was just to talk to you about it. There was not going to be any decisions made, and it's going to be totally left up to the council on, if they even want to hear this in the future. So it'll be left up to you folks. So the last order of business, new business, is a update on the Okra facade grant. And in your packet, you should have received a Gmail from Shrewsbury and Associates. The council, you and the Redevelopment Commission have approved, or paid for our share of the planning grant, which covered 12 buildings on Main Street. Now, there are seven more building owners who would like to participate in this program. And each participant, our share, the city's share would be $1,500 if we want to add on to it. So by taking seven more participants, at $1,500 would be $10,500 divided between the city and the RDC, your share would be $5,250. I told Shrewsbury to do not add these in, keep it at 12 like the council approved. If the council wants to add on, I'll find out, and I'll get back with you. If you don't want to do it, then we just keep it at 12 and move on down the road. So, I'm going to approach the RDC about it at their next meeting. But if you want to add on seven more business owners, I think it's great that we've had 19 building owners on Main Street between Emerson and Eighth that want to upgrade the facades of their building. That's a good thing. But if you want to add those seven, your share would be $5,250. And I'll defer to the council president for any guidance.
Well, that's new guidance right there. So, was there a, is there any kind of deadline involving when we dealt with this Okra grant as far as people coming aboard, or, not that we want to discourage, I just wondered, was there any kind of a deadline?
I don't think so. Angel, do you know? Not that I'm aware of. But I told them I would ask you folks and seek guidance. If you want to do it, then we'll move on down the road. Now, I do know that the planning grant will be turned in sometime this spring, and then we'll be applying for funding later on this year. So...
What's the, what's the time period for the council on this, Mayor? Is there...
Maybe next meeting.
So, between then and this meeting, we find out maybe how the RDC was?
Yeah. And I'll ask the RDC when they meet. I think they meet this Thursday, I'm not sure. But I'll ask them if they want to participate. They might not want to participate either, you know, don't know. I'm just, I told them I'd bring it up to you. I just think it's a good thing when you have 19 building owners want to participate. So, I'll put this back on the agenda, and then we'll take it up in March and we'll either move forward or we'll just stay right where we're at. So, that concludes new business. Council comments, buddy?
I do want to thank, well, one of the duties of the judge is to come and give us a presentation on the court. And I, it's just good news how well the court has done. When we go back in time a little bit, there was concern on the court, even the ability to pay for itself, but under kind of new ideas and so forth, it's done very well. And I'm sure that it's an easy process for the city of Beach Grove as well to have a court close by. I, I just wanted to say something with everything going on in government and the mayor had spoke on this, uh, in, in, uh, in words. I don't know if it's in the, the paper or not, but I did see it, uh, on the computer. But that, how fortunate it is, local government is that maybe not everything, but most things we can touch, even if we don't like it. You can go down and see a, a new ambulance. You might say, why do we have an extra one? But at least you can see it, touch it. Same way with streets and sidewalks and just government, you know, for all is just so much easier. And, um, I know I linger on a lot, but I, I, I know when everybody talks about Beach Grove, you know, being just a great city, I, I think of the fact to me is, is that I remember it when we had two pool halls on Main Street. It wasn't anything you'd go up to Carmel and brag about, but nobody wanted to leave because everybody knew each other. My grandfather, uh, my grandparents, both sets lived here and they wouldn't move. My father would not move. I knew other people and their, their families wouldn't move. It wasn't about, it wasn't about we had anything better than the next person. It was the fact that neighbors just took care of things pretty well. And it's hard to get back to that stage. We're now in one where we've got to, and I'm not going against this, but we've got to entertain everything in the rest of the world now. We've got to, I don't know, set up the next strip mall somewhere to make people think they want to live here. Or you got to have this or that. And, and maybe you do, because I realize we're transient more so than we are. But I just wanted to bring up that Beach Grove's success in, in, in mine was the past. It wasn't about anything the city did. The city had great, great services as they do now. But the one thing it really had was, was people felt a sense of ownership in this town. And I think that's the selling point for Beach Grove is when everybody feels like they really have a voice and they have ownership. I don't think it's the next building we're going to build on Emerson. If it's that, then we're no different in any other city. Um, and I think that's something I just wanted to throw out there. Just, I think that ownership of our community and that's how I felt growing up that was pretty neat. And sometimes I think what we are, we don't sell the right thing. You know, if I want the greatest, I can move to Carmel. I seriously can. I can move down to Southport if I like it. But maybe we ought to taunt what kind of services we have in Beach Grove, our police and fire and department of public works and the fact that people here as a community have some history in what this city is all about. And with that being said, I do want to throw something out to the council and to, to Brad, and this has been brought up before, and to the mayor. And I think I've mentioned it, but I've had more than one person talk about, uh, the bids, which now, uh, you have to have a bid when you're at, um, ten thousand or over. And there's been some encouragement to maybe move that to a higher amount, like twenty thousand or something to make it simpler. Simpler for people who do make bids for the city. This is more of a, a board of works deal. But I know in the past, in order to try to get that ten thousand amount, um, maybe not, uh, there's a lot of math has to be done. So I'm just going to throw that out there that I, I'm going to look into it more, but possibly raising the bid amount to twenty thousand or more versus the ten thousand. And being long-winded as I am, that'll be all. Thank you.
Are you sure?
Well, no, I got another, uh, no, go ahead.
Uh, real quick, just got a couple of things. Um, we mentioned some, our rates tonight. Just to throw out to the council, I was out at my mom's who lives in Greenfield. Last week, I go out there, we set her trash out every week. Here's a ninety-five-year-old lady that sets one bag of trash out. And, um, I, I looked at her bill she gets. Now, Greenfield's a bigger city. You'd think they'd charge a little less. Her bill for three months is sixty dollars for s- trash pickup. She sits out one bag a week. And that's discounted, guys, because she pays three months. If you paid each month like some of them do, it's higher. Now, food for thought, I, I thought that was interesting that they're a bigger city and they charge more. You'd think they'd charge less, but, oh, well. One last thing, I'm going to be John Jennings. John always gave us updates on the basketball team and I've really got into this. Uh, went to the last three games. That's a fun team to watch, guys. Uh, mayor's been there to a few of those games with me. Uh, but they beat Newcastle, who is number one in the state. They were behind. Our coach got threw out of the game. Uh, they were behind by ten or twelve points. They come back at half. They were down six. They come back and they ended up beating them by ten points. And Mark was there and, and I'll never do this again to you, Mark. I asked Mark, I said, Mark, I didn't know you did this. He said, yeah, I've done it since like eighty-five. I'm like, wow. You ever had a problem? He tells me about a problem they had one time in the game. Well, sure enough, what happens? All of a sudden, I'm looking down, there must have been fifteen Beach Grove police there. There was this like problem, I think, with Newcastle. But they handled it. I don't think it was bad, but I thought, well, I better not ever bring that up to Mark again. It's bad luck. But just to let you know, the high school team, the, the, the varsity is like, what, fourteen and four or something like that? They beat Ron Colley by three. That was a great game Saturday. The JV team is undefeated. They're fun as heck to watch. I haven't got to see the freshmen, but I just found out Saturday, they're eighteen and one. We got three teams, I bet that's not happened in a long, long time, that are all three teams that are doing really good. And other than that, one last thing that, that principal mentioned, the robotics team from the high school. But South Grove has a robotics team. My grandson's on it. The first time they went out for their meet or whatever they call it, they were, they finished thirty-seventh out of thirty-nine. Well, they come back at Guyan Road, they were eighth, they got into the finals and they finished second. And that was pretty good because some of these robotics, I mean, some of these schools must have boo-foo bucks because they build some neat robotics. That's all. I'm updated.
You might want to be careful on the, you do have Ron Colley voters too.
So what? It was just fun game. It was a good game by both teams at Ron Colley. It was.
Yeah, last week there was a, an issue was brought up to me by, uh, actually Kaufman about a business owner on Main Street, uh, that's in the process of doing some construction, uh, investing in Main Street. Um, and I had spoke with them and Liz, uh, had brought it up to me. I spoke with them at length on Friday and I told them, they said they couldn't be here tonight, but they wrote me a letter that they wanted me to read, uh, to go over their experience with this. So, um, sorry to be long-winded here, but it's, uh, and this is from Uriah and Tess Ellis at the Taekwondo, I believe it is, down there on North, what, North Fifth. Uh, we have been business owners on Main Street for ten years and have recently been heavily involved in revitalization efforts through Okra and next stop, Beach Grove. As a show of faith in our dedication to the community, we have chosen to make a personal investment by improving the business property. We appreciate your time in speaking to us regarding to our recent experience with the permit process in Beach Grove. We believe there are a couple of comments that are worth reiterating. Uh, first, our general contractor, John Hall subcontracted the electrical work he wanted done on our building. He wanted to make sure that he was in compliance with city codes and had a permit pulled accordingly. It turns out there was an issue with the electrical company used to pull the permit, Rivera. And it was alleged that the Rivera electrician used unlicensed employees to perform the work in the city. The permit application was flagged and triggered, a visit from Mike Hughes, the city's only code, electrical code enforcer. I understand that Mike approached the work site and intimidated the workers. He was then asked for identification, but refused to provide it, even insisting that he didn't have to. When he exited the building to inspect the meters behind it, I advised the worker on site to lock him out. I didn't know who he was and since it, he didn't identify himself, he didn't have any business there. At this point in the encounter, Mike produced identification and received cooperation from the workers. Again, I was not present when this work event took place. I was called and advised them how to proceed. The underlying issues behind Mike's visit were, were what they were and we don't dispute that. However, we believe it is unacceptable for a city official to approach a job site, enter a place of business, refuse to properly identify himself and intimidate workers. That behavior does not reflect well in our city and John Hall did begin to immediately search for another, at, at electrician under whom to acquire the permit. He advised us that many of his contacts declined the job. Now, this is a sub talking to other electrical contractors. Declined the job because they have so much trouble obtaining permits in Beach Grove. Our main concern is also related to how the city official is conducting business with those who are applying to improve Beach Grove, specifically the professionalism of Debbie Springer, the deputy clerk. My contractor's experience was that she was rude, condescending and had no sense of urgency with any part of the application process. The sense was that she didn't, simply did not care on whether the progress, progress, progress continued on a project or not. On one occasion, she advised my contractor what additional items were necessary to complete the application. The contractor indicated that he would need twenty-four hours to get those items, but would need, indeed get them to her by the next business day. She initially reported to him that it would be fine as long as she had everything by four P M. the next day. The next day, he was needed at a job in Terre Haute, but communicated his intention to Debbie before the end of business, four P M., so he could provide her the additional documentation as suggested. She then told him that she instead was leaving at three and if he did not have everything to her before three, she would issue a stop work order. Maybe she was scheduled to leave at three, but the implication was that she had some authority in those circumstances and that the contractor should accommodate her. As such, the job was delayed another day, costing us more time and money. Furthermore, our contractor advised us that once she did have all the paperwork in, hand the next day, she still, she stated that she still didn't feel inclined to issue the permit because the subcontractor electrician was rude to her. Again, we find this behavior incredibly damaging to our city of Beach Grove. When word gets out that contractors can't get the permits they need to do jobs here, they'll just choose not to bid on them. All parties involved understand, all parties involved understand the necessity to be properly licensed and bonded to do work in the city. When the contractor is attempting to comply, the city officials should recognize that and reasonably execute their duties. Rude and unprofessional behavior like this in the private sector will result in being reprimanded or fired. This doesn't appear to be the accountability with Debbie and she seems to be free to say what she wants and acts or how she wants and acts like she wants. This is not helping the greater underlying movement in the city to effect change, growth and a positive image for the community. All city officials need to be held accountable. Thank you for your time, uh, Uriah and Tess Ellis. Um, sorry, I know that was long. She actually just sent it to me like ten minutes ago. But, I mean, she's exactly right. It, it shouldn't be that the process of trying to do work in Beach Grove has this gatekeeper that's a deterrent to do business. It makes no sense. And I know this isn't the first time this has happened. So just wanted to keep everybody informed that word's getting out.
I'd like to respond to that. First, first of all-
My turn to comment, isn't it? Is it, is it council comments?
Dan, Dan, if you want to talk about it after the meeting, you can.
No, this needs to be out to the public. Craig was advised on what was going on down there. We asked his legal ruling. There's state statute that's involved in this. They are, and Mike Hughes is the electrical inspector. There was things that was not being done properly.
I think the issue isn't with, and they admit that there are issues with permits and license, okay? It's just the way she acts.
I can't help how she acts.
I mean, yeah, you can.
No, because she deals with these people day in, day out. They lie. I'm not specifically saying any person-
I used to change wash batteries down at my dad's shop. People were rude all the time. But you know what? I still change her wash battery.
And she still gives out permits.
With a smile on my face.
You're talking about one person and one company and they have notoriously been an issue. This isn't the first time Craig's been involved in this and, uh, there's been other building commissioners that's had the same issue.
So, so we did have an issue with Rivera and I think we worked it out.
No, it's been worked out, but I mean, it, this isn't the first time I've heard this complaint with Debbie, so. And it's not about issuing permits. It's about the manner with which she does it. That's all I got.
Well, I'm one of these people that you talked about because I had a problem with my contractor. So just with that being said on the record, I'm one of these people that you referred to. But my comment is I want to thank the council for the reverting, non-reverting fund for our Parks Department. That's a good thing. We've done, that's good work. Uh, now our Parks Department has some, I'm hoping some boundaries to move and do great things at our community center. So I applaud you guys. Thanks for your work. Thanks for everything you do for us as a community. I'm hoping this is going to help out.
Chris?
Um, congratulations to Tara Wolf, our newest RDC member. Um, well, that's about all, the only comment I have.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
All right, one last comment. Uh, I, uh, went to the game the other night and sat next to Dave and Chris until Dave started in on the refs. And I had to leave. It was unbelievable. I'm teasing. Uh, that's it. I don't have any comments tonight. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make my motion to adjourn.
Second. Meeting is adjourned, uh, nine twenty-two, Dan.
All right.
Thank you.